Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 3, 2024 City of Fraser Regular Planning Commission Meeting. Please place any cell phone, items, or other devices that might disrupt this meeting on silent mode, or turn them off. Would you all please stand now and for our verge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the real republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number two is the roll call. Ms. Greenia, please.
Can I hear you?
Mics are on. Ed, we need assistance, Ed. Can you hear me now? Not at all?
You can hear me out in the hallway.
Oh, they're here in the hallway, Ed. Not here. Thank you for your patience. And while we're waiting for that, I'm going to turn something on special for me. I think if I can figure out how to turn it on. It's not a recorder, just so you know, it's helpful for me for my demo, hearing aids, so I can hear everybody. And it's not going on. Can you hear me now? You can hear me better? Okay. All right. We're going to go to agenda item number three. I'm sorry, item two, roll call. And Ms. Greenia, would you please do the roll call?
Commissioner Barr?
Here.
Chair Zarneki?
Present.
Commissioner Farina?
Present.
Mr. Kyle?
Present.
Commissioner Meyer?
Present.
Mr. Warnock?
Present.
Okay. We have a quorum. We will continue with agenda item number three, approval of the agenda. I'm going to make a motion to correct one item, I believe, is item 6B, site plan and other. It references the site plan that's going to be under consideration this evening, but the terminology is recommendation to city council. We will be making a recommendation to city council on the rezoning only, not on the site plan. So I'd like to eliminate those wordings under 6B. I'm also going to move that we can move our interview of our planning commission candidate. We have a vacancy on board, so that would be item number 6D, interview of Mr. William Transit. I'm going to move that above our new business, above the rezoning, the conditional rezoning application. I'm going to ask you to be very respectful when Mr. Transit comes here for his interview on the board. He certainly has a lot of people here that's going to be viewing his and hearing his answers. First, we're going to make a motion for the agenda, and then we'll call you forward, okay, when we're ready. Okay, I will.
You moved?
Go ahead.
A second.
Okay. Moved by Chair Zarneki and support by Commissioner Farina to revise the agenda, move item 6D up in front of the conditional rezoning, and to remove the words "recommendation to city council" under item 6B.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may.
I'm not sure who's speaking to me.
Over here. Okay, thank you. Just for some clarification, my understanding, and Lauren can chime in, is that item B is the action item for the conditional rezoning, rather than a site plan review on that item tonight.
That's what she said.
Is that, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Now you have me confused.
I'm sorry.
But it's titled "Site Plan," and it's not.
But it's rezoning.
But it's rezoning. That is correct. That is, so my understanding is 6A is the public hearing for the rezoning. 6B will be the action item for the recommendation to council.
Okay.
I believe it's more so the other, instead of the site plan and other, but there's no site plan, so it's.
There is no, there is no site plan.
Yeah, so maybe a confusing word, so apologize.
But you want me to take them separately, but act upon it under B?
That is correct.
All right.
I apologize for the confusion.
It's okay. All right, everybody understand?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Greenia, would you take a roll call, please, on the agenda?
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zarneki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Warnock?
Yes.
Agenda's been approved as revised. Agenda item four is the chairperson's opening remarks. Tonight's meeting will follow the agenda that was posted online and has been printed for you here and is available at the entrance of the room. Before we begin, it is important to let everyone know that the planning commission is created by state law. The commission is comprised of seven members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. As you can see tonight, the board currently has one vacancy that we hope that we will fill fairly soon. The role of, I'm sorry, the role of the planning commission is to plan and promote the efficient coordinated development of the city for the health, safety, and general welfare of its residents. We are not here to negotiate with applicants or allow everything an applicant is requesting. However, the planning commission does have the power to approve certain requests and recommend others, depending on the nature of the request and whether all of the standards and the zoning ordinance have been met. The planning commission may also impose conditions on a proposed project in order to ensure that those standards are met. Other individuals seated here this evening are the city's legal representative from O'Reilly, Ransilly, PC, Haley Thomisch, and Lauren Seer from McKenna &amp; Associates. The procedure that we will follow tonight for the public hearing first involves the city planner, who will provide an overview of each case. After the overview is completed, the applicant will be asked to provide additional information and answer any questions the commission members may have. After the commission's questions, the public will be invited to speak. Each person will have an opportunity to speak, must only speak directly to that specific case, and must only address the commission, not the applicant or anyone else in attendance. If you have questions, please direct them to the commission. We will try our best to answer your questions. What I'm going to ask during the public meeting, though, is no back-and-forth conversation. When you make your comments, we will track, hopefully track, all your questions and answers, or, you know, any questions or concerns, we will address them after I close the public hearing. Okay, the commission may ask for answers to your questions if they are relevant to the factors we are required to consider. After the public has had an opportunity to speak, commission members may again ask questions of the applicant, and then the commission will consider a motion. Can I just have a show of hands how many people plan to speak at the public hearing? Okay. So we have.
Will that remark be held in minutes for this meeting?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes. Because we have a fair amount of people who want to speak the public hearings, as a chair, I'm going to limit each person's comments to five minutes. Can I ask, just for me to go ahead with the agenda, please, and I will do my best to answer questions?
I have a question for your retiring, what you just asked and stated.
The five minutes?
No, not the five minutes. Prior to that, during your discussion on what the planning board does, right? You're going to come up there, we're going to talk, and you're going to listen to all of our questions, and then answer them at the end, or you are going to answer them individually?
Not individually, no, sir. That will take too much time. We will do our best to answer afterwards. If we don't have the answer for you, we will let you know the department and or person who can assist you with that.
That's very much true.
You are welcome, sir. We are going to go to agenda item number five, approval of the minutes of December 6, 2023. Any discussion on the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Asham Putham?
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll support that.
Been moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Commissioner Warnock to approve the minutes as submitted, the December 6, 2023 minutes. Ms. Greenia, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zarneki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Commissioner Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Warnock?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, we are going to go now to agenda item number six, interview of the candidate, William Transit. Would you please come to our table, Mr. Transit, and welcome?
Sorry, there's a delay back there. I couldn't understand.
Oh, is there a delay?
I can hear it through the doors. Kind of annoying.
Okay, give me a moment, Mr. Transit. Pull up your items here. Okay, Mr. Transit, would you go ahead and introduce yourself and share us a little bit about yourself?
My name's William Transit. Born and raised in Fraser, Michigan. Went to Fraser High School, graduated 2004. I currently own a business, own and operate a business located in Fraser, as well as a resident of Fraser, so been here my whole life.
Okay. So you are also a resident of Fraser?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Why would you like to serve on the planning?
It seems like an opportunity to contribute to the community and help Fraser sort of move forward, and, you know, through the years of living here, I've noticed there's been good years and bad years, and, you know, if you can participate and help serve the public in any way, that's sort of what you're supposed to do, so.
How did you hear about the vacancy?
Cynthia.
Our senior clerk?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Do you know the role and responsibilities of planning commission? I did announce them at the beginning of the meeting, but do you know what our role is?
Basically, everything you just, you said at the beginning of the meeting is to.
To guide the city?
Guide the city and the progress and decisions that they make moving.
Okay, all right. And how do your skills and experience, how would they relate to the role of the?
I'm a master plumber, heating and cooling contractor, and real estate investor, so I'm familiar with sort of all aspects of that idea. I also serve as the chairperson of the Downtown Development Authority of East Point, so I'm involved in local government there.
In East Point?
In East Point, yeah.
As a non-resident, though?
As a non-resident. Well, we have, I have a business there, so, that is located in downtown development area, so I serve on the committee there.
On the DDA?
Yes.
That's impressive. That's good. Are you available to attend planning commission meetings? Normally, our meeting is on the first Wednesday of each month.
Yes, yes.
Yes?
There's a lot of people, but yes.
And does your schedule allow you to visit our sites that are under consideration?
Yes.
Okay. Are you aware of any conflicts of interest? Are you related to anybody in the city, or?
No.
Hold a position in our city or anything?
No.
Not aware of any conflicts?
I know of no conflicts.
Okay. I was going to ask you if you serve on another board. You've already answered that question. Have you ever been a public speaker at a planning commission meeting?
No.
Okay, all right. Have you viewed any of our meetings online?
I have, I have. Before coming here, I watched a couple.
Did you?
Yeah.
Are you surprised by the room full?
This is, yeah, this is a little, this is full compared to the other ones.
This is quite unusual, so we don't want to scare you away. All right. What is your vision for the City of Fraser?
At the end of the day, right, it should be a place that people want to live, and in order for people want to live there, it has to have things that means that they're going to stay, right? Because you don't want to see it become a rental community like East Point and some of the other cities that I've worked with, and you don't want to see it be just a drive-thru, right? You see a lot of that in some of the other suburban areas where these cities are just another mile road that people drive through to get to a freeway, right? So the idea of creating a place that is a city people want to be.
Will draw the people here and stop and engage, correct?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Are you familiar with the city master plan and the zoning ordinance?
I'm not, no.
You will become familiar with it.
[laughing]
Any of the process of applications, any familiarity with that?
I am not, no. I, it seems like it's like any sort of application process, like pulling a permit, right? You have to file for the, what you want, and then, you know, the city will decide whether they're going to law.
Yeah, you file for, an application for a proposed development, that development will go through the departmental review, and then through this board for a yes or a no, more or less, basically, that's what it is. Let's see, what else do I have? Well, there are vacancies on our zoning board, the appeals board also. Would you have a preference which board you might?
I don't have a preference. Cynthia just sort of told me about this opportunity. This is.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, just so we know, so everyone's clear, he did come in and submit an application. His application was next in line, which is why I contacted him when the vacancy was clear. And at that point, he had owned a business here, but since the time he submitted that, he has moved back into Fraser.
Okay, all right.
He was out of Fraser for a little while, but he is back as a resident.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you clarified that, so.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, it's good to know, but yes. That's all the questions I have, but I encourage anyone else to, you know, ask Mr. Transit.
Just, I'm going to take it for granted that you read plans.
Yes.
Because that's a big thing here, so we just want to make sure that you've got a background in it.
I'm familiar with, a master plumber and a mechanical contractor, so.
I'm sure you see them all the time.
Very familiar with the prints, yeah.
Good, that's what we need.
Yeah.
All right.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes, where do you see the city going in five, 10 years?
Depending on a tax basis, right? Like, it is one of those things that will require financing to do it, and, you know, it is a hard question to answer, and say, five years, based on the current tax revenue that the city has, I reviewed some of that, right? So if you're going to sort of encourage development, you're going to need to apply for block grants and some of the things that, you know, can bring in the funding to create the spaces that would be required to make it a city that people stop in and they don't just drive through. There's a lot of opportunity through the ice arena and the sports, and Utica seems to be developing nicely, you know, there's, there's opportunity. Specifically, it's going to be a requirement of business and government sort of to get together to draft that plan. But the idea is to keep it a resident, family-based community that people want to live in. And so however you're going to do that, that is going to require money, and how you get that, that's the other piece of it, right? So, there is a lot of block grants out there right now that, I know East Point has started to capture, that I think could apply here, to develop some of these areas into green space and parks, even though we have a strong park system, you know, obviously, the idea of creating parks that draw people, because like, the parks tend to date, right? And they have to be updated, and they have to maintain sort of their relevance and what's important to people that live here, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Transit?
Do you have a five-year plan for your business?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Do we make a recommendation this evening, or do we consider it and do it at another meeting?
I think last time we made a recommendation.
Yeah, you make a recommendation to city council.
I will entertain a motion if we want to go forward. Commissioner Farina?
I'd like to recommend that, I'd like to make a motion to recommend Mr. Transit to the city council for position on the planning commission.
I will support. It's been moved by Commissioner Farina and support by Zarneki to make a recommendation of William Transit, Transit, to become a planning commission, make a recommendation to city council. Ms. Greenia, would you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Chair Zarneki?
Yes.
Commissioner Farina?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Warnock?
Yes.
Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you.
And I believe you will see Ms. Greenia after this, and she will tell you what the procedure is after.
Well, I feel like, since this went through, I can probably do an item that will get on the packet tomorrow and hopefully get him approved at next week's city council meeting.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ms. Greenia, would you let them know that it is on the agenda?
I will.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Transit.
And chairperson, because of the bad feed from out here, we're having a very difficult time.
Can you knock on that door?
The council chamber doors.
I was going to say that, too. Can we shut the big doors, because the sound's coming back in?
You're on a delay out there.
Thank you.
[inaudible].
Yeah, okay. Let's see if it's any better. Let somebody else in, we'll see if it's any better. Thank you for sharing that with us, ma'am. Can you find a seat? Do you, he'll hear it? Is the hearing better back there then? Just myself? Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to go to agenda item number 6A, public hearing for conditional rezoning, number 23-02, address 32981, 329871, and 32875 Utica Road, conditional rezoning of two parcels from Community Business District, CBD, to Commercial General CG District for the purposes of constructing and opening a 24-hour fast food and gas station business. At this point, can we get the review from Ms. Seer? Am I holding the public first, public hearing first?
Yeah, I can give the review. It's rather lengthy.
That's okay, we need it, so, yes, go ahead, Ms. Seer.
So the applicant sheets proposes to rezone a 3.3-acre site from the Community Business District to the Commercial General District. For clarity's sake, I do want to note that the public hearing notice went out as Central Business District instead of Community, but it's still abbreviated CBD, and the attorneys informed me that we did not need to re-notice.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight is not a site plan review. They did submit a site plan, a preliminary site plan, to show the concept, however, it's only a recommendation, a review of the conditional rezoning request, and so conditional, sorry, conditional rezonings must be voluntarily entered into by the applicant. So they propose conditions for the rezoning that typically hold some benefit to the public, to the city. So the voluntary conditions that the applicant has provided is that the property should only be used for the purposes of a fuel service station, fast food restaurant, with or without drive-through, and open for 24 hours. There are, there are questions from the attorneys in this, if, do you want the applicant to be up here at this time, or would you like to?
Would you like for them to answer those questions at this point, then?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So would the applicant come forward, please? Thank you. And would you identify yourself by name?
Sure. Good evening, planning commission. My name is John Gaber, and I am the attorney for the applicant. Here's some feedback. My address is 380 Northall Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. We have the rest of our team members here, too, representing the developer, civil engineer, sheets and such, to be able to hopefully give you a broad presentation, a good overview of what we're proposing, and then to be able to answer all the questions that you have, and hopefully, we can answer the questions the audience has as well.
Okay, so Ms. Seer, how would you like to go forward? Do you want to finish with your review, or do you want to specifically ask Mr. Gaber the questions?
I can go through the review, and then at the points where there is questions from the attorney's office, we can address those.
Okay, and Mr. Gaber, after you answer the questions, then we'll have you do your full presentation, then? Is that all right?
Okay. Our team members are going to kind of do a handoff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, do you want me to tackle these as they're in your text?
No, let her go through it.
Sure. I was just going to read it for the record, if that's, so the city attorney would like clarification from the applicant if the fuel service station and fast food restaurant will be open 24 hours daily, or if they would just like the ability to do so.
The intention is for the, for the business operation to be open 24 hours a day.
So the second, the second voluntary condition is that the property will be developed in accordance with approved site plans that substantially conform to the attached conditional rezoning plans, subject to any site plan modifications required by the city to comply with the city ordinances and design requirements applicable to the CG district. The third condition is the architecture and materials of the building and the fuel pump canopy will be substantially in accordance with the elevations included in the conditional rezoning plans, with brick on all sides of the building and high-quality finishes. The fourth is that the trees and other landscaping will be added to the property in excess of the zoning ordinance requirements as shown in the conditional rezoning plans. The fourth is the development will be designed to alleviate drainage problems to the residential neighbors to the south by collecting all of stormwater drainage in the detention pond for discharge into the public stormwater drainage system. The applicant will maintain the drainage system and enter into a stormwater maintenance agreement with Macomb County to do so. Number six, the applicant is repurposing a vacant abandoned property, including the purchase of the vacant parking lot to the south of the bank site to be developed with a pond and public park area. The city attorney would like to note that there, it's their understanding that the proposed public park area cannot be characterized as a public park unless Sheets intends to convey ownership to the city, which will reduce the development site and change the application of the site plan standards to that reduced, smaller site, which they do not believe is Sheets' intent, but will turn it over.
Right, thank you. It's the intention, basically, for this to be a, you know, kind of a park area, picnic area, and aesthetic area that's open for public use, and, you know, Sheets, the property owner, will continue to own and be obligated to maintain that area as part of the conditions.
The applicant will construct and maintain for the public use a park area with gravel surface, picnic tables, trash receptacles, shade trees, and ornamental plantings overlooking the pond and walkways as shown on the conditional rezoning plans. Such park area will be at least 3,000 square feet. Number eight, the applicant will construct and dedicate to the city a pedestrian plaza at the corner of 14 Mile and Utica Road, where indicated on the conditional rezoning plans to commemorate the location of the former State Bank of Fraser. A portion of the facade materials of the bank will be preserved and incorporated into the plaza area, which will be comprised of dried lay pavers, a concrete seating wall, and formal planting beds. A historical marker shall be mounted in the plaza. The applicant will design a plan for the plaza in consultation with the city and the Fraser Historical Society. Such area shall be at least 1,925 square feet. And the city attorney would like clarification on the proposed pedestrian plaza, and if the intent of this pedestrian plaza is to be conveyed to the city by deed or in some sort of conversation easement being granted to the city, with title being retained by Sheets. Additionally, they would like to know who would be responsible for the maintenance once established, and what the role and extent of the Fraser Historical Society will be.
The intent for that, essentially similar to the picnic area that we talked about earlier, is for Sheets, the property owner, to continue to own that space and be obligated to maintain that space. The way we would, we would propose to document it is putting that in the conditional rezoning agreement, because that's, that's a document the city council has to approve that's entered into by the applicant and the city, that's recorded against the property, so it runs with the land, essentially. So it's an obligation that we have to maintain, to develop and maintain that plaza area, like I said, that is binding and runs with the land, and if we don't, we're in default under our rezoning, the conditional rezoning. Respect to the Fraser Historical Society, what we're going to propose to you tonight in our slide presentation is, you know, one concept of what we believe this could look like that would be, you know, very attractive for the community, but we certainly want to work with the city staff and the Fraser Historical Society to make sure that we convey this the way that they want it to be conveyed. So their input will be, you know, in the design process, as we want to collaborate with them to accomplish this.
Mr. Gaber, then I might be, you know, interrupting at the wrong time, but the property adjacent to the residence?
[inaudible].
The property adjacent to the residence, the quick claim, the 15, I'm not sure what you're planning to do with that.
Well, that's, Madam Chair, that's the, I think that's the next condition that we're offering.
I thought Ms. Seer already addressed it, okay.
No, no, that's, that's fine. No, no, that's fine. We haven't addressed it yet. It's, I don't want to step on Lauren's toes, but the next condition is...
I'm sorry.
No worries, I can read it real quick. So, number nine, the applicant will grant and convey by quitclaim deed to the adjacent property owners excess land and areas where adjacent properties encroach onto the site in the areas cross-hatched on the attached GIS map.
Yeah, essentially, in doing the survey, we found that this property that we're acquiring contains more land, essentially, and that the wall in the back and a little bit of the property in the back encroaches. And so, what we're proposing to do is to just convey that to the property owner so that, you know, they own what they think they own. And we'll work with city staff and the city attorney to make sure that's done correctly.
Thank you, Mr. Gaber.
The final condition is that the applicant will replace the existing wood fence on the western boundary of the site with a new fence, six feet in height, and the city attorney would like clarification on what, if you guys have a proposed material for that fence.
And essentially, we're flexible, depending on what the city wants and what the adjacent property owner want. If it's replacement with new wood, if it's some type of a vinyl fence, you know, we're flexible in that regard.
The next section of review is against ordinance standards for conditional rezonings. There are, I believe, four items under this, the first being that, so the conditional rezoning, conditional rezoning agreement and conditional rezoning plan will result in the development of a property or establishment of a land use that is, A, beneficial to the applicant, the city, and the public. The applicant has indicated that the proposed rezoning will result in a vibrant mixed-use development that will serve residents of the city by providing gas, food, and convenience items. Additionally, it will provide park amenities for public use and replace asphalt on the southern parcel with landscaping and green space. The State Bank of Frazier building facade will be repurposed into the pedestrian plaza to commemorate the former use. Additionally, drainage issues that have been causing issues for neighbors to the south will be mitigated through the installation of the detention pond. Item B is that it will not be detrimental to neighboring properties or the public. Staff would note that the 24-hour operation may be disruptive to the adjacent residential properties. The applicant has provided a plan to minimize adverse effects to neighboring properties by including an existing six-foot concrete wall, detention pond, park area, tree, and other landscape screening. The drive-through will be a touchscreen menu board rather than a speaker box. Additionally, lighting will be shielded and directed downwards to avoid any spillover on the property line. Number, letter C is it will enhance the area in a way that would be unlikely to be achieved or would not be assured in the absence of the use of conditional rezoning. The applicant has indicated without the conditional rezoning, another commercial property would likely develop the two parcels separately and would not address adverse effects. And then, staff would like to note that that State Bank of Frazier building has been vacant for approximately two years. And then, finally, D, it is, is it in compliance, or is it in the public interest considering the benefits reasonably expected to accrue from the proposal as compared with foreseeable detriments associated with it? And the applicant has provided that the project includes numerous public benefits due to the purchase of the second parcel to add the detention pond and public open space recreation area, the historical monument plaza at the corner, and the building materials and landscaping that exceed ordinance requirements, and the correction of existing stormwater deficiencies. The applicant maintains that these benefits outweigh any potential detriments. The next section of review isn't ordinance standards, rather, it's some best practices and additional considerations when considering rezoning a parcel. And the first one is consistency with the master plan. So, the master plan indicates the larger parcel with the bank building as central business district core, and the empty parking lot as central business district fringe. And so, while this project does improve walkability and offer pedestrian considerations, such as the picnic area and seating plaza, which is a goal of the master plan, it does not follow the uses recommended for these districts, which are more low-intensity uses such as small retail, personal services, offices, things of that nature. When considering adjacent uses, the site does a but residential, but the current zoning district would also support commercial development adjacent to that residential. The proposed land use is consistent with adjacent land use patterns, but the patterns, current patterns do not align with the existing master plan. When considering the area and surrounding districts, the parcels to the north and east are also zoned Community Business District as well as the parcel fronting Utica Road to the south and adjacent parcels in the northwest. The south and southwestern parcels are zoned RM, which is residential medium one-family district. There are no Commercial General parcels adjacent or nearby to the subject site. However, the current zoning would permit a gas station as a special land use, provided that it is developed on a site where a gas station existed as a lawful non-conforming use. Notably, businesses of primary, primarily drive-through nature are prohibited within the Central Bus, or the Community Business District. It could be argued that the business is not primarily drive-through, and should be noted that there do exist businesses with drive-throughs included within the Community Business District. Should also be noted that the proposed rezoning would leave discontinuous Community Business District parcels to the south and west. And finally, the economic need and potential, and development potential. So, the site has been vacant for about two years. As discussed, the site was previously occupied by the State Bank of Frazier. Recently, the Frazier Public Library considered the site, but renovation costs made it not feasible. So, while there have been issues in developing the site in the past, it should be noted that it's not an attribute of the zoning designation, but rather, the conditions of the site itself. So, within the conditional rezoning process, the applicant is also allowed to request any special land uses they might need or variances, and those go before city council for approval. That's something a little bit unique about the rezoning process, so it doesn't go before the zoning board. So, the applicants have requested three special land uses for the site, the first one being fast food restaurants, the second being gasoline service stations, and the third being operating a 24-hour business. The special land use approval standards are listed below, the first being the proposed use shall be such location size and character that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood and applicable regulations of the zoning district which is located. The site is located in a large street corner in a commercial area. In addition to the State Bank of Frazier parcel, the proposed development would also include the vacant parking lot to the south, which would be, which would include a historical plaza commemorating the State Bank of Frazier, a public park, a detention pond, picnic tables, and vast landscaping. The proposal would result in the redevelopment of a vacant blighted property in the heart of the city, spurring economic development that will hopefully lead to other commercial redevelopment in the area, and the development with the historical plaza and park area will further the objective of creating a walkable community along Utica Road. And all of these are provided by the applicant, just for reference. So, the next one is the proposed use shall be of a nature that will make vehicular and pedestrian traffic no more hazardous than is normal for the district involved, taking into consideration vehicular turning movements in relation to the routes, traffic flow, proximity in relationship to intersections, adequacy of site distances, location and access of off-street parking, and the provisions for pedestrian traffic, with particular attention to minimizing pedestrian vehicle interfaces in residential districts. The applicant proposes vehicular drives located along the intersection, away from the intersection, in an effort to minimize conflict from turning movements on Utica Road and Fourteen Mile Road, where site distances are more notably, are more than adequate. Proposed pedestrian walkways are also located in green space areas where applicable, notably, any potential conflict areas between pedestrian and vehicles are clearly signed and striped. C, the proposed use shall be designed as to the location, size, intensity, site layout, and periods of operation of any such proposed use to eliminate any possible nuisance emanating therefrom, which might be offensive to the occupants of any nearby uses permitted, whether by reason of dust, noise, fumes, vibration, smoke, or lights. The applicant has indicated the development is designed so that fuel pumps are located close to the intersection away from adjacent properties. The building is centered on the site with a detention pond and open space public recreation area on the south side adjacent to neighboring properties to minimize any adverse effects. The applicant is also proposing to retain a six-foot concrete wall on-site to screen the neighboring residential properties. Likewise, the detention pond, park area, trees, and other landscaping screening proposed installed will also minimize adverse effects for the neighboring residential properties. Additionally, the drive-through will have a touchscreen menu board and no speakers or amplified sound to place orders. The lighting is proposed to be LED and will be shielded and directed downward just to not spill over onto the property line. Further, the business, the building will, is proposed to include brick on all four sides with high-quality architectural features and finishes, which exceeds ordinance requirements. All equipment is proposed to be rooftop-mounted in order to minimize noise and odors. Letter D, the proposed use shall be such that the proposed location and height of buildings or structures and location and nature and height of walls, fences, and landscaping will not interfere with or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings, or in reasonably affect their value. The applicant has provided that the development would repurpose a vacant blighted site. The proposed site layout, building material, architectural, and landscape design is in excess of ordinance requirements and will enhance the aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood and encourage development of similar upscale businesses. E, the proposed use shall relate harmoniously to the physical, economic, and economic aspects of the adjacent land uses as regarded prevailing shopping habits, convenience of access by prospective patrons, continuity of development, and a need for particular services and facilities in specific areas of the city. According to the applicant, the proposed development will service the needs of both residential residents in the area and employees of commercial businesses for gas, a meal, food, and other convenience items in a one-stop mixed-use location not currently available elsewhere in the city. F, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location. The applicant has indicated that the proposed development will service the needs of both residential residents in the area and employees of commercial businesses for gas, a meal, food, or other convenience items in a one-stop mixed-use location, again, not found elsewhere in the city. G, the proposed use is so designed, located, and planned to be operated, that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. The applicant has indicated that the repurpose of the vacant blighted site, the layout, the design, materials, historical plaza, pond, park area, landscaping and drainage improvements, traffic circulation, or other benefits of this convenient, high-quality business servicing the needs of the area residents and businesses will enhance the public health, safety, and welfare. And finally, the proposed use shall not cause substantial injury or to the value of other properties in the neighborhood which is be located and will not be detrimental to the existing or other permitted land uses in the zoning district. The applicant has provided that the proposed use will not be detrimental to neighboring properties, but will provide benefits with the high-quality development, historical plaza, park, pond area, landscaping, and drainage improvements that are not currently available and would benefit the neighboring properties. With these benefits, the proposed use should not adversely impact the value of adjacent And finally, the applicant is requesting five variances, the first being to allow a drive-through restaurant on a property contiguous to a one-family residential district and within 200 feet from the property line to allow, number two, to allow a 24-hour operation on a property contiguous to a residence and residential district. Three, to allow a second freestanding fuel pricing sign on Fourteen Mile Road on the site, where the ordinance only allows the second sign to be an identification sign. Four, to allow the sign setback of 52 feet from the major centerline route of both Utica and Fourteen Mile Road for the freestanding fuel pricing signs, which is an 18-foot variance from the required 70-foot setback. And finally, to allow five wall signs on the building when only one front wall sign is permitted. The applicant replied to all others, I believe, four standards over the five variances. Would you like me to go over all of those?
Sure, go ahead.
The first standard is that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applying to the property in question, or as to the intended use of the property, that do not apply generally to other properties in the same zoning district. Regarding allowing a drive-through on a property contiguous to a one-family residential district, the applicant has provided that the property is commercial property on a large corner lot that accommodates a drive-through use. The former bank on the property operated a drive-through for years on the property. Regarding the 24-hour operation, the intended use of the property for a mixed-use 24-hour operation promotes safety by ensuring property is staffed and secured during the hours between midnight and 6:00 AM, so it did not become a desired location for loitering. Sheets provides several security cameras that are monitored by personnel at a centralized location to ensure there are no issues on the site. Sheets also proudly services many emergency service workers during late hours of night when dining options are limited. Regarding allowing a second freestanding sign, free fuel sign, the property is located at the intersection of two major roads, Fourteen Mile and Utica Road, with an entrance drive on each road. A full-size fuel pricing sign on both road frontages would be appropriate, otherwise customers would not be able to see gas prices on both signs. This could lead to safety problems as cars on the road, as cars on the road that lack the fuel pricing sign may decide to visit Sheets only after they can see the fuel price on the sign on the other road, which could lead to unsafe turning movements into the site, into the site, drivers changing lanes, and other unintended consequences. Having a clear, full-size fuel price sign on each road frontage would alleviate these concerns. In regards to the setback for the fuel sign, the property, the property is located at the intersection of two major roads, Fourteen Mile and Utica, with an entrance drive on each road. Complying with a 70-foot setback would result in signs being too far away from the roads, making them difficult for drivers to see. And regarding the five wall signs, the property located at the intersection of two major roads, again, Fourteen Mile and Utica Road, with entrance drive on each, so the building practically has two different frontages, one on each road. Further, the intended use of the property is a mixed-use building, which is used for both restaurant and convenience store purposes. Therefore, identification signs on both road frontages would be appropriate to identify Sheets' building to drivers on both Fourteen Mile and Utica Road. The advertising signs, which are a 24-hour drive-through and made to order food, allow drivers unfamiliar with the location to identify Sheets and its offerings in a very succinct manner. The second standard for variances is that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial, of substantial property right similar to that possessed by the properties in the same vicinity. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Regarding the drive-through, the applicant has provided that the drive-through would enable the applicant to operate its restaurant business by providing this convenience for the driving public, just like any other drive-through restaurant in the area. A restaurant without a drive-through would put the applicant at a competitive disadvantage. Regarding the 24-hour operation, the variance would allow Sheets to compete with other late-night drive-through restaurants, gas stations, and convenience stores in the area. Regarding the second fuel pricing sign, the Speedway gas station on the corner across from the subject site has a full-size fuel pricing sign on each road frontage. So, the variance is necessary to treat similar properties the same way. Regarding the setback, the other commercial uses on Utica Road and Fourteen Mile Road, Speedway in the vicinity have signs that are approximately 52 feet from the center of the centerline of the road frontage, so the variance is necessary to treat this property in a similar manner than with other commercial businesses in the vicinity. And regarding the five wall signs, the request of variance would allow drivers to identify that the development is a Sheets', and to quickly understand what Sheets' stores offer. The variance, therefore, enables Sheets' to communicate the signage to potential customers, the identity of the development and offerings. Other properties in the vicinity are not located on corners and do not offer a mixture of uses like Sheets', so less signage is required for such businesses. Therefore, variance allows Sheets' and its mixed uses the ability to quickly, be quickly understood by potential consumers, just as other businesses are able to deal with fewer signs. The third standard for variances is that the authorizing of such variance will not be substantial detriment to the adjacent property and will not materially impair the intent and the purposes of this chapter or the public interest. Regarding the drive-through, the drive-through will not be a detriment to the adjacent property owners. This drive-through is limited to a few cars, with the peak period of lunchtime being the busiest time of day with a peak of 11 cars. The Sheets' drive-through is a low volume compared to McDonald's, Starbucks, et cetera. The menu board is a touchpad, so driver interaction is very quiet. Further, the applicant is... Further, the applicant is willing to donate the rear 15 feet of its site to the adjacent residential property owners to provide additional buffering assistance from the drive-through.
Go ahead, Ms. Seer.
Regarding the 24 operation, the 24 operation will be, will not be a detriment to the adjacent property owners. Customer traffic is lower in the late-night hours. The Sheets' drive-through is low volume compared to McDonald's, Starbucks, et cetera. The menu board is touchpads, so the driver interaction is quiet. And again, the applicant is willing to donate the rear 15 feet to provide additional buffering. Regarding the second fuel pricing sign, allowing, a second fuel pricing sign should not cause any detriment to the adjacent property owners as it creates a safer condition and impacts the roadway and adjacent properties. Regarding the setback, Sheets has provided that authorizing the request of variance would not be a detriment to the adjacent properties on Utica Road, 14 Mile Road, or 14 Mile Road as the setback distance is the prevailing, prevailing actual signage setback distance in the area. And regarding five walls, the five wall signs in the building, Sheets has provided this is a large corner site with a mixture of uses that comprise the Sheets' development. It provides Sheets the ability to have potential customers, quickly identify the establishment and offerings. Other businesses in the area are able to accomplish these objectives with fewer signs, so the intent and purpose of this ordinance requirement are not impaired. The next condition is this, that the conditions or situation of the specific piece of property or the intended use of the property for which the variance is sought is not so general or recurrent in nature as to create a general rule for such condition or situation. Regarding the drive-through, the Sheets has provided that the corner location, size and configuration of the site, together with the former occupant operating a drive-through, makes the site distinct from other sites pursuing a drive-through restaurant in the area. The proposed mixed use, mixed use with gas, meals and food and other convenience items also distinguishes the intended use of the property from most other similar uses of only some of these offerings. Regarding the 24-hour operation, the proposed mixed use with fuel meal, meals, food and other convenience items distinguishes the intended use of the property from most other similar users of only some of these offerings. Regarding the second freestanding sign, the condition of the corner location with two major road frontages is not a general condition found on most properties, so it would not cause precedent. Regarding the setback, the condition of the corner location with two major road frontages is not a general condition found on most properties, so again, it would not cause precedent. And regarding the five wall signs, Sheets has provided this is a large corner site with a mixture of uses that comprise the Sheets' development. It provides Sheets the ability to have potential customers, quickly identify the establishment and offerings and other businesses in the area are able to accomplish these objectives with fewer signs, so the intent and purpose of the ordinance is not impaired. The next condition for variance is that the modification to setback location, site or building requirements is sponsored by the Planning Commission for a specific proposal that benefits the city by providing better design or efficient use of the site or results in a more creative development. All fees to be paid by the applicant. The applicant would request that the Planning Commission sponsor the proposed use and development as the proposed development provides community benefits by redeveloping the vacant blighted property in the heart of the city, providing a historical wall plaza commemorating the first State Bank of Fraser heritage, providing a public park area with pond, picnic tables, trees and landscaping on the south side next to residential homes and providing a mixed-use stop for fuel, a meal, food and other convenience items. If the Planning Commission does sponsor this, then the applicant does not need to meet the standards from the previous variance standards listed. And the final condition is that the phasing of the required site plan improvements may be warranted because the cost of such improvements are relatively high in relation to the total cost of the applicant's development or in addition. Planning Commission recommendation shall be required together with financial security and the amount of the deferred improvements, but this is not applicable. So finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the conditional rezoning standards as well as whether City Council should approve the special land use and variance requests as part of its review in making a recommendation to City Council. Additionally, below, staff has provided some potential bases for denial or recommend, or approval recommendation. This is not an exhaustive list, but rather just some ideas. And the, the potential basis is for approval would include meeting master plan goals and improving pedestrian access consistent with master plan goals for reducing parking and increasing green space. It's consistent with land uses to the north, site improvements such as fixing drainage issues and promotion of the economic development in the previously vacant site. So potential basis for denial would be, might be not consistent with the future land use map. Requiring rezoning, three special land uses and five variances may be indicative that this is not the most compatible land use for the site. It would create discontinuous community business district parcels to the south and the west of the site, concerns for level of intensity near residential uses and preservation of a historically significant building, although it should be noted that the building is not on the historical register. Planning staff also would like to note that we have received some emails and phone calls from residents who were not able to make it tonight. One phone call was in support of the rezoning and Sheets. And then three emails were, had concerns and were not in support of the rezoning, concerns about traffic, noise and the 24-hour impact on neighboring properties. I believe that is it from me.
Thank you, Ms. Seer, for that comprehensive review. So the audience knows that review, comprehensive review by our planner was submitted to each member here, so we have had plenty of time to review it and go over it ourselves. So I appreciate your time, Ms. Seer. And so I understand you got three emails and one phone call. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I have one question on your report, and it's on page five, under four, the underlining, where you say where there have been issues with developing this site in the past, it should be noted that this is not attributable to the zoning designation, but rather the conditions of the site. Can you clarify what conditions you're speaking of?
My understanding was that when the library was looking to move in, to me ADA compliance, it would have been too expensive to install an elevator in the building, as is. So that's not necessarily a issue with the potential uses that could go in there, but more so just the structure of the building.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Do any members have any questions for Ms. Seer? Commissioner Farina? For Ms. Seer or not?
Now, this special land use is not contiguous with the other zoning in the area, correct?
The, if it was rezoned as the CG, it would be discontinuous, yes.
That would be in essentially spot zoning?
I would say that there are elements to a spot zone, but I wouldn't say it's, you know, definitively spot zoning.
Do you know if there's been a light study or a traffic study done for this?
I would have to defer to the applicant on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that, sir, definitely.
As Public Safety chimed in on this?
Since this has not been a site plan, Public Safety has not had a review.
Can it be in City Council's best interest to have that input before they make a decision?
Yeah, I, well, so after Planning Commission makes a recommendation, whether it's an approval or denial, the City Attorney and the applicant's attorney will be working together to create a conditional rezoning agreement, and then it will go before City Council. So in that process, we can, I can send this on to Public Safety and Engineering for any preliminary or any major issues they might see from these preliminary plans.
Typically, we talked about, you talked about the fence and replacing the fence. Typically, isn't that supposed to be a masonry wall between private and?
I believe yes. I believe that is typically what the ordinance calls for.
Thank you.
Any other members? For Ms. Seer?
Oh, not for Ms. Seer, no.
Not for Ms. Seer. I want to make sure I go in the right format here, so I'm going to ask the applicant to make his presentation and then open the public hearing. Is that correct, Ms. Tomich?
That is correct. And before the applicant begins his presentation, I just wanted to, I know Planning Commission, we don't see very many conditional rezonings, as has been noted. Any decision by the Planning Commission today will be a recommendation for approval or denial to City Council. Just wanted to clarify as well for the members of the public here. As well as the aspect of the conditional rezoning is that the conditions must be presented by the applicant themselves, that cannot be imposed by the Planning Commission. I'm pretty sure that was in our packets, but I just wanted to make sure that was cleared on the record. And Mr. Farina, I believe you.
Does it have to be one recommendation? What if we decide a split recommendation? Is that, can that go forward to, or is it yes or no?
Typically, it's, it's yes or no. I know that there is an even number on the Planning Commission. So however the Planning Commission decides today, it will move forward to Council, but typically we see these as, we don't typically have an even number on the commission.
Can I make a comment to that? I believe your ordinance says if her conditional rezoning essentially, yes, they have to be conditions that are voluntarily offered by the applicant, but we can adjust those conditions throughout the process. It doesn't have to be what we sent, what we prepared and submitted already. That can be adjusted here, that can be adjusted between here and City Council. So the fact of the matter is, is that, yes, you can't impose conditions, we have to offer them. But we certainly appreciate your suggestions and your input and whatever comments you may have, and we will look at that and, you know, possibly adjust the conditions based upon the input of this body. So we don't want to discourage you from, from giving us your comments and input. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaber.
I'd like to say one thing before it starts. I found out about this on Facebook prior to getting our packages last Thursday. My wife told me it was on there, so I started reading some of the posts. What I want to bring up is I think everybody should have an open mind and listen to it. Ninety percent of the stuff on Facebook was not true. I did not accept a bribe, neither did anybody else on this board accept a bribe. This is not approved already. I took that kind of personal. If you knew what we make for this, it's not even minimum wage, okay? It's pretty much volunteer what we do. And the amount of hours that we put into this already at home and our time to know what the truth was. The second thing I kind of laughed at, I seen on Facebook, was it's going to increase traffic by 18,000 cars. I don't think there's a restaurant out there would be excited if they had 18,000 customers a day, so let's have an open mind, let's listen to what they got to say, and then we can talk. Everybody in this room will get a chance to talk, and then we'll make our decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Commissioner Chris.
I have a question. Is there some reason why this is anonymous? The owner is an LLC, is just the address, 32981 Utica Road, LLC is the owner. And I did a lot of research, I cannot find who the owner is. You gave us a quick claim deed, all blacked out. There's no way we know who's actually coming in here. Just an LLC, that bothers me.
Well, I, what I can tell you is that Sheets will be the, Sheets will be the operator. And David will tell you about Sheets essentially and what Sheets proposes and, you know, how it operates and such. That's what you're going to be dealing with, is the Sheets' operation.
Why, why is it so secret? Why is it hidden? Why is the owner, we don't know who's coming in here.
Go ahead, Ms. Segrenea.
Commissioner Barr, pardon me, but when I posted that on? Pardon me? When I posted that packet online, I'm very mindful of people's information, so I was the one that took out some of that information on my own. That wasn't how it came to me. So the petitioners or the applicants did not give it to me that way. I didn't receive it from Lauren, pardon me, Ms. Seer, that way. I have been mindful in the past, I've been doing this job a long time, and I'm very careful about what I post on a public packet. I didn't believe it was anything that was going to make any difference in the decision from the Planning Commission or, so that, that's on me, not the petitioner. I just wanted to make that clear.
I went to, no, I checked it through the Register of Deeds.
Oh, okay.
How the deed was. No, I didn't just take.
Okay, ma'am.
I did the checking and, no.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you knew that was a reflection of me and my choice to post that on, as a public packet in that manner. I generally will do that.
No, I checked that, I checked LLCs, I checked Register of Deeds, I wanted to see who it was, and only the address, even through the City of Fraser for taxes. The owner is the address with LLC after it.
Okay, ma'am. I just didn't want to make sure I was accountable for what was my fault.
Quiet, please. I'm asking the audience to please be quiet. This discussion is among the administration and the board members. Go ahead, Ms. Barr or Ms. Segrenea.
I'm all set, thank you.
No, I think I'm finished.
Okay. Ms. Tomich, do you have any comment on, any of the legal documents are going to go through our City Attorney and it'll be kosher.
Yeah, I, I have, I have no additional comment, there is nothing wrong with an entity owning property. I have no further comment on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tomich. I think we're ready for your presentation, Mr. Gaber.
Thank you. As I mentioned, my other team members are going to speak as well.
Okay. And please state your names and how you're associated with the application.
Good evening and a happy new year. Thank you to the City of Fraser Planning Commission and to the dedicated staff and third-party consultants, Lauren, for consideration of this project. Tonight, we're excited to present this opportunity for a commercial mixed-use development. I'm Drew Miller, I am the project manager for this project. I represent Kilken Gold. We're a company with a century-long legacy in real estate development specializing in convenience stores, quick-service restaurants, grocery stores and shopping centers across Ohio and neighboring states. Over the past five years, we've collaborated with Sheets to introduce their stores to various Ohio cities, including Columbus, Dayton and Toledo, and most recently, we've moved our focus to the Detroit area, and that's what brings us here to Fraser tonight. Joining me tonight is David Bruckelmar with Sheets. David's going to provide some insights into their company, their store operations and product offerings. Additionally, behind me is Becky Klein. Becky's our civil engineer with PEA Group. She's going to outline specifics of the site. And John Gaber, who has spoke already, is our attorney. John's going to elaborate a little bit more on the conditions for the rezoning, and he's going to discuss the special land use variance requests. Before we jump into the specifics, I just wanted to shed some light on why we chose this location and share little details about our conceptual plan. This is a rendering of the site here, so our real estate team selects potential sites based on factors such as traffic volume, demographics and available infrastructure. It's crucial to note that Sheet Stores don't generate substantial new traffic, but they capture existing traffic. A comprehensive traffic impact study was conducted already by Syncare Consulting Group. They affirmed that no major road or intersection improvements are needed with this proposed development, except for a few minor signal timing adjustments. Those would all be submitted to the county and MDOT for review and approval if this project was to move forward. Addressing concerns about neighboring residential properties, we've communicated our mitigation efforts to the property owners on Rosemary Avenue who are adjacent to the development. We're going to elaborate on those a little bit more tonight, including maintaining the existing concrete wall and planting approximately 30 evergreen trees and 14 deciduous trees along that southern property line. Also, as Lauren indicated, our lighting plan does feature new LED lights with downward pointing and shielded designs. Those will ensure minimal spillover effects. So we do have a lighting plan that was produced, it was not required as part of this submittal package, but that will, can be provided in the future. The proposed drive-through, as we mentioned, is characteristic of Sheet Stores, and it's only expected to have peak volume during the lunch hour. The drive-through is designed with touchscreen order points to minimize noise. with touchscreen order points to minimize noise disruptions. In acknowledging the historic significance of the State Bank of Frazier, we intend to honor its architectural features and building materials in our development. Recognizing the evolving nature of banking, we see this as an opportunity to revitalize the vacant property while preserving its historic elements. Our vision includes a pedestrian and walkable-friendly development that respects the past while serving the present and future generations of Frazier families. Our conceptual ideas for preserving the limestone blocks and ornate elements of the facade of the bank and incorporating them into the pedestrian plaza and picnic area are still in early stages. They're conceptual at this point. Should this project move forward, we welcome community input, including that of the Historical Society, to collaborate and shape a vibrant and beautiful business district at the heart of Frazier. Thank you for your attention, and we look forward to engaging the Frazier community in the coming stages of this project.
Thank you, Drew. Again, as Drew said, my name is David Bruckelmeier, and I'm with Sheets, 39300 West 12 Mile Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I'd like to shed a little bit of light on who we are as a company. You've heard a lot of technical information tonight. A little bit of that is daunting, but I want to tell you who we are as a company and as a family. So, Sheets was started in 1952 in central Pennsylvania as a family-run, family-operated deli and takeout convenience store. And we still hold true to those values today. In the 1970s, we added fuel as an additional offering for our customers. We are still family-owned and operated in all of our stores. We do not have any franchisees. So, we have a level of consistency that we're known for throughout our platform. So, from the East Coast all the way out to Ohio, we have a very good level of consistency in the look of our buildings and the operations. There's a lot to go through here, but I'd really like to give you an idea of what our building looks like. If you could go back to that slide before. Here's a picture of a store. I believe this is in Columbus. And this is our prototypical store. This is what we are proposing in general. Occasionally, we have something, you know, like a different type of material we need to do, some different metals and things like that that are in zoning requirements. And we'll meet that. But in general, this is what our building looks like. And we like to, obviously, provide a high-quality, good-looking building in our, in the communities that we service. And in addition to that, you can see at the front of this picture, you know, our standard fuel canopy awning. Again, this is what we'd like to propose. And again, there are some, you know, occasional differences between zoning requirements and things like that. But in general, this is the nice architectural feature that we like to provide for our fuel awnings. And again, just fitting with the premium offering that we like to give, this is the inside of our building. We've got nice tile floors, high-quality architectural finishes. And as you can kind of get a grasp on, we have a premium offering. Any kind of premium beverage you want, fresh coffee, made-to-order sandwiches and food, all kinds of things like that that our customers enjoy. And you can see there on the right, actually on that picture, we have inside dining for roughly 32 people, as well as some exterior seating at all of our standard stores, just to accommodate people in the summertime, to go out and eat outside and enjoy their time. So, what really makes us unique? I think what really makes us unique is that we truly are a family. And a couple of things that we do to represent that. Number one, I think we treat our employees really well. We offer competitive wages. And, you know, employees that work at the store full-time would get the same benefits that I would as a corporate employee. I think that says a lot. The benefits are everything from medical, dental, vision, you know, 401K, you know, short-term disability and all kinds of things like that. So, we really do offer a nice benefits package for our employees that work on-site. A few other things we do. From a security perspective, we make a substantial investment at every single site to have roughly 50 to 60 high-definition networked cameras that are monitored 24/7/365. And in addition to that, our store employees have the ability to sound an alarm, you know, silently, and notify our security personnel that are monitoring that there's an issue. A couple of things that happen. They can call the police remotely. They can release video footage quickly to local police departments so that we can identify any, any issues or any people involved if there's a problem. Also, there's a PA system that our employees that are remote can actually speak to people on-site. So, if someone's outside causing an issue, our store employees don't even have to go out. And sometimes, they don't even know that the people that are remote that are, are talking to these people outside, and it's happening. And they can identify people that are loitering and tell them, hey, we'd like you to leave the property. Things like that. So, we make a substantial investment to try to make our site secure. And that's in addition to all the lighting, and all the things like that that we do to just try to make our site, obviously, clean and friendly and bright at night, as, you know, need be for security. Third, I'd like to kind of touch on an environmental basis. We have fuel. That means we have underground storage tanks, and that brings up a lot of concern. We make a huge investment in the top-of-the-line fuel system that we can buy on the market. It has everything from, you know, stainless steel fittings, which are well above the average fuel system install. We have double-walled tanks that are all monitored 24/7/365. And if there are issues, we have employees in the area that are Sheet's employees that can come and take a look at these tanks and make sure there's nothing major going wrong. And if there is, they are able to make action, to take, take action and fix that. So, those are just some of the things, and that's not all of it. I can't go through all of it tonight. But those are just a few things that really set us apart as a company. And in addition to that, we obviously have quite a few charities, include, you know, Special Olympics. And we do have Sheets for the kids during Christmas to donate packages to, you know, kids that are in need. Do you have any initial questions on who we are as Sheets or, or operations that I can answer at this time?
Commissioner Farina, go ahead.
Do all of your Sheets have gas stations?
We do, yes.
Every one of them?
Every single one, yes.
How many locations do you have in Michigan already?
We have no sites built yet. We have one site in Romulus that's going to be under construction in March. And then we are going to have several more following that.
So, you're, no questions from the audience at this time? I'm sorry, only during the public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. Bruckelmeier. So, you're, how many stores might you have in the future here in Michigan?
In the future, we would have somewhere between 60 and 80 stores here in southeast Michigan.
How many? I'm sorry.
60 to 80 stores in southeast Michigan.
Southeast Michigan, okay. Thank you. Okay. Are you normally just based within Ohio...
Southeast Michigan.
Yes.
Sorry, I misspoke. Sorry.
It was in southeast Michigan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay. And you have stores, restaurants in Pennsylvania, Ohio, what other states?
Pennsylvania, Ohio, Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina, and West Virginia.
Okay, okay. All right. And I know you did your market analysis, or you wouldn't think the site would work.
Yes, I think our real estate people are confident that this is a good site for our operation.
Okay. You think you'll get enough traffic coming through?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I might have more questions, but go ahead. Please, pop in any question.
We have more to present. Also, Becky, our engineer's going to present.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
Good evening. My name is Becky Klein. I'm with PEA Group, 58105 Van Dyke Avenue in Washington Township. So, if you would just click on the next slide, please. Just to give you us an overview of the site. It's a little over three acres on the corner of 14 and Utica. The site of the Frazier State Bank, and then the southeastern portion there is actually a separate tax parcel that has been auxiliary parking area to the, the bank property. Next slide. So, just a little history on the State Bank of Frazier. It was established originally back in 1910. It relocated to this corner back in 1930. They were acquired by Security Bank of Commerce in 1990. This property was sold to PNC Bank in 2009. And then it ceased operations as a bank in 2019. And then, just as a repeat of the note, it's, it's not a registered historic site, although we do recognize this property has historic significance. So, just looking at our overall layout, you can see the corner of 14 and Utica, the central, the building is located at the central western portion of the site, the fuel canopy to the northeast. The pond would be down at the southeast area with the picnic area that had been previously touched on. And then the commemorative pedestrian plaza up at the corner of 14 and Utica. So, are, can you back up one sec? Just a couple of statistics. We would probably have a total of about 35 employees at this site. The largest shift would be about six to eight people. The building's just over 6,000 square feet, and there would be 64 parking spaces.
Including the canopy?
Yeah, including the, 16 spaces under the canopy.
Okay.
This is a color rendering of the proposed landscaping plan that we have. And this includes replacement and extension of the existing fence that's along the northwest property line, screen plantings added all around the perimeter to improve buffering, repurposing what's essentially just a big piece of asphalt right now into a pond and green space. And then a picnic area and a pedestrian plaza maintained by Sheets for the benefit of the public. Another look back at the overhead rendering, so you can see how the, the plantings and the extensive buffering that we're adding back there along the residential areas. And then the pond and the pedestrian-friendly areas up front. So, just taking a quick look in detail, this again is just a conceptual layout at this point of the pedestrian plaza, but we're, we're contemplating something like this, creating a monument wall out of portions of the existing facade with a historical marker, a little pedestrian plaza area, a seating wall, and then some nice landscape plantings around it. Next slide. Just a look at the corner with that conceptualized pedestrian plaza in place. And then taking a quick look at the picnic area, we would have, can you back up? I'm sorry. We'd have a paved area with three, four picnic tables out there, trash receptacles, ornamental plantings around the area, and shade trees so that it's, you know, a nice place to stop. So, at that point, I'll turn this back over to John, and he can touch on the...
Ms. Klein, I'm going to ask you a question.
Sure.
If you would explain to the board members and those in the audience how the retention pond works, accumulate the water.
So, yes, it's a detention pond rather than a retention pond. So, this would be designed according with the new Macomb County ordinance. And essentially, we would take all the water off of our site, and it would go into the pond and forbay to be cleaned. And then it would be held over a period of time and discharged slowly into the public storm system. So, that's going to take a great deal of load off of the existing infrastructure in this area. And it, it will reduce problems that I know people have experienced in the region under heavy rainstorms with flooding occurring in the streets and, and in some of the parking areas.
Has there been contact with the residents along, Rosemary, about the issue of water and flooding, and hopefully a resolution to it?
We have reached out on a very preliminary basis to the residents adjacent, you know, just introducing what we're planning to do. And we're wanting to start a dialogue with them so that we can discuss all of the elements and hopefully address their various concerns and make sure that we can, we can treat everybody fairly.
And that's why I didn't catch Mr. Miller to, to, do I have the name right, Mr. Miller?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. To ask you if you have made actual contact with any of the residents in the area.
So far, we have sent a letter to the residents.
You have?
We have sent a letter prior to Christmas, and it just explained a little bit about what, what was being proposed, when this meeting was, and just seeking feedback. I provided my cellphone and email address, encouraging some feedback.
And did you get any feedback?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you, Ms. Klein. And any questions? Commissioner Farina?
Detention pond, how deep is it?
That's not been fully designed yet, but I would expect it would probably be between four and six feet deep at the deepest point.
I don't see any fencing around there.
Again, this is a very early drawing. And depending on how the design of the, the pond actually comes out, fencing may or may not wind up being necessary for protection.
Would there be some, some type of slope or whatever?
Right, right. Depending on how we slope the sides, there are things that you can do, like building in a protective shelf within the pond itself, so that if somebody happens to trip and go down in there, they're not going to just drop immediately into a deep area. There'd be a shallow area for them to stand on.
Notice that there's two ponds. Why two ponds?
So, that is laid out as a pond and a forbay. So, that is a standard mechanism for doing water quality treatment. So, there you go. You can actually see on the west side there, there's a smaller blue area and a larger blue area on the right. So, how, how the ponds typically work is that you bring all the water into the forbay, and that acts as a pre-settlement basin. It encourages dirt and debris to settle out of the water before it goes into the larger holding pond. And by doing a two-stage detention like that, you wind up with, with much cleaner water that meets water quality standards when it enters the public water system.
Thank you. I think that's it. Ms. Klein, thank you very much.
Okay. I'm going to take over from here and go over a few slides. I'm going to try not to repeat what, what your planner had gone over, but there are some things that I do want to highlight.
Okay.
So, we do need the rezoning because of these three uses that we are proposing. It, we look at this as a mixed-use site in terms of the development. Next slide, please. And essentially, we offer, as, as the planner went through, 10 conditions so far that are, that are pre-printed and you've seen already. The general purpose of offering these conditions is to restrict the rezoning to the project that's being proposed. So, essentially, what we're showing you is the only thing that can be there. That's what the conditional rezoning achieves. Most importantly, the conditions do two things. They, they limit the uses to our proposed mixture of uses, the restaurant, the convenience store, and the fuel station.
Give us a moment, please. Thank you.
Is your mic on, sir?
I believe so. It sounds like it's echoing to me.
I apologize, Mr. Gaber. Are we all set, Ed?
Ed, are we set?
Okay. Don't they are? Want us to chat, Ed?
I, I can try to speak. I think this is the microphone that was in question.
Maybe, go ahead, Mr. Gaber.
Are we hearing, are we hearing anything, any better now? Or is it still the same?
It's out in the hallway. They can't hear.
Yes, the hallway.
It's out in the hallway that they can't hear? Okay. Well, hopefully, he can hear me testing 123 and, you know, see how this goes.
Yeah, it goes.
Is it working?
Thumbs up, Ed? Not yet? What do you think, Ms. Tomich? Should we go ahead with the meeting, or should we wait for the audio to be fixed in the hallway?
I, I would wait, see what we can do for now. If not, I would propose we possibly keep the doors open. But maybe give him a couple minutes and see what he can figure out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Gaber. Thank you for your patience, Mr. Gaber. I'll call for a five-minute recess and give our video person some opportunity to fix it.
Is this more? Is this better? Can anybody hear me in the hallway?
I can hear you clearly.
Sounds as though the room is okay. It's just the hallway?
Because it's an open venue.
Ah.
You're surrounded by two commercial parks, so that's... I don't think you have to have a mason because it's just a funny residence.
Up to the west is still CBD. That's where the fence is.
I know.
That's pretty standard. Typically, you need the wall. Well, of course, you're going to have... People don't want to see change. That's pretty typical. That's right.
How long were you in?
Just two and a half days.
As I say, for every day in the hospital, it takes you one week to recover.
For the first, like when I got there, I was probably already checked in in the back by then in the morning, I'm guessing. I got extra... They get so... There's nothing they can do for you. They just give you IVs and pain pills until it gets to something that you test. Then they finally give you, you know, water to drink. And then the night before I got out, they gave you... It was like tomatoes.
Until we get back to it and we start talking, I mean, everybody just...
All right, so is it working out there? If we talk into the mic, will it go out there?
Can you hear me now, Ed? Ed, can you hear me? Ed, are we there? Can you hear the... Can you hear it now, Ed? Good. Could you hear it?
What about the Evergreens? We say it's going to be four to six for the wall.
Is it working out there? So, we leave the door open?
Comcast is down. It's still live streaming and it's still on WOW.
Okay.
But it's not on Comcast. So, what do you do? Postpone it for a month or just keep going? He said just keep going.
She doesn't determine the public...
All it takes is five years to make them look different.
It's working on... It's not working on Comcast.
Oh, but check with our attorneys because if they can't hear, doesn't...
Glad you were talking to them. They can't hear. Yeah, they couldn't have anticipated.
It is, because I was down 67. Why don't you get down?
I call the meeting back to order. Make sure everybody is here. Yes, thank you, Ms. Green. The issue is, we are being videotaped on WOW and YouTube but not Comcast. And that is what you're viewing out in the hallway is Comcast and it's not working. The only thing we can do at this moment is open the doors, do our best to speak. If you can step inside and crowd in, it's up to you. But that is what we're going to have to go forward with. So, I will continue with the meeting and Ms. Green, just note that it's 8:39. I don't know if we have more chairs to go. It's quite crowded. Do we have any more chairs?
There are chairs out in the hall.
They can bring in? There's no room to put them?
I think you should cancel it because it's not appropriate for people waiting there. We are standing for an hour now. That you should cancel it. It would be more appropriate for the city of Friday to have something more appropriate for these people. I just want to say that.
The public hearing has been noticed for tonight.
Yes, it has. The public hearing has to go, has to be open and closed, no matter what, sir. It has to be open and closed. Okay. Okay. And Ms. Tomic, I will ask you to direct any questions so that everyone understands what's going on, that it's legal, it's open, meeting's open. You go ahead and come.
I'll reiterate what you just stated. The public hearing was noticed for tonight. Unfortunately, I know that the audio in the hallway is not working. This is the best we can do here and now. We do have microphones in the room. If there are people in the hallway who wish to speak, you know, they will still be able to speak during the public hearing. They'll still be able to come up and speak at that time.
And as well, everything is going to be taken in minutes and the video will be live that you can actually go to the meeting when the meeting's over and go listen to it and hear everything and much clearer. Okay? Mr. Gaber, thank you for your patience. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I was saying, the conditions, we're proposing 10 conditions. And the purpose is to restrict the rezoning to the project that we're showing you. Most importantly, it limits the uses to the mixture of uses that we're proposing. The resident, pardon me, restaurant, convenience store, and gas station. And it also restricts the development to what is shown on the site plans, basically the concept plans that we've given you, the preliminary site plans and the elevations and such. So, that's the purpose of most of the conditions. Next, please. So, the rezoning standards, we've... In the planner's report, she went through these, so I think we can skip this section of the PowerPoint. Keep going, please. And the same thing with regard to the special approval, the land use, special land use standards. We've gone through them and we believe that we, you know, certainly satisfied those requirements because we're providing substantial benefits to the community through these conditions that we're offering, through the site plan and such, the public park, the historical plaza, the screening and such, that basically the benefits outweigh the detriments, any detriments that could result from this project. So, we believe that's generally why and how we meet the special land use standards. So, next? 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 And let me mention, there are specific standards too relative to, you know, the fast food use, the drive-through use, and essentially the gas station, or pardon me, the drive-through, the 24-hour operation, and the gas station use. And we meet all those. Those are just specific standards that we've satisfied. Next, please. Next? Okay, let's go to the variances. If we could just show this page. I want to make sure this is clear, the variances and how we satisfy the variance request. I do want to go through this a little bit. The first two variances are to allow a drive-through and a 24-hour operation adjacent to single-family residential. Three and four deal with the monument signs where the fuel pricing is adjacent to both roads. And then number five are the wall signs. Next, please. So, for the variance created, number one, allowing the drive-through restaurant contiguous to single-family. We believe that because this is a large corner lot, it can accommodate the drive-through use. The former bank on the property had a drive-through. And there's plenty of room on this site to provide screening and buffering, which is part of our proposed plan. Now, it's necessary for the preservation of a substantial property right to enable the applicant to operate its restaurant by providing the standard convenience that other restaurants provide. And without a drive-through, we would be at a competitive disadvantage. Now, the drive-through, we believe there's no substantial detriment here because we have a low-volume drive-through compared to McDonald's or other type uses. During our peak period of lunchtime, we estimate about 11 cars per hour are anticipated. McDonald's has 30 or so cars per hour at its peak times. And you can see the menu boards, they're touchscreens. They're not amplified sound and speakers. So, because this is a corner lot, the size, the configuration and such, and the former drive-through, we believe that and our proposed mixed uses provide the distinction of this site and this property so that granting this variance would not become a precedent. Next? The second is similar to allow a 24-operation contiguous to single-family. The exceptional conditions again are basically the same type of thing. The configuration of the property, the size of the property, and its location on two major roads. The variance allows sheets to compete with other late-night drive-through restaurants, gas stations, and convenience stores in the area. We believe because, as David had mentioned, the security cameras, the people on site during the early morning hours and such, and the lower customer traffic, what it does is it, you know, encourages, I would say, good behavior and prevents loitering on the site and such. And that actually works to the benefit, we believe, of the entire neighborhood because, you know, we have this monitoring going on in the area, as David said, with our security cameras and with the people on site, in addition to the lights that work to prevent any nefarious activities from occurring. And then also, we don't believe that it would set a precedent for the same reasons. Next, please. So, the freestanding signs, as you can see, maybe I can highlight those. One sign would be right here with the gas price and one would be right here. We have the, you know, the pedestrian plaza with the historical monument here, so we don't have the ability to put a sign on the corner, really. So, because the way the property is located at the intersection of two major roads and the driveways are far away from each other, we think it would be appropriate to have a regular fuel price sign on both road frontages. Otherwise, you know, people might have difficulty seeing it if it's on one, say it's on Utica and not on 14 Mile Road. They may be looking at the Speedway sign and then want to see our sign. It may cause them to maneuver unsafely on the road. So, we want to prevent that from happening. And we believe it's necessary for the preservation of a substantial property right because there are others that have that, like the Speedway station. You see the two signs that it has, one on each road. Again, we don't believe there's any substantial detriment. We think it'll make it a safer condition to have two signs, make it easier for people to see than having a single sign. And then the, excuse me, there won't be precedent set because it's a corner location, two major frontages, is not a general condition found on most properties. So, for that reason, it wouldn't cause a precedent. Next, please. So, number four is the setback variance for the freestanding signs. So, these signs, the ordinance requires a 70-foot setback. But if we had a 70-foot setback, the sign would be back here and this sign would be back here. There's not enough room and it would be too far away from the drivers passing by. The rest of the signage, the monument signs in this area, the Speedway, the other gas station, and some businesses up and down 14 Mile and Utica, if you look at that, they basically have signage that's about 52 feet away from the center line of the road. So, all we're asking here is to, you know, to be treated the same way in a fair manner as the other businesses. Next, please. Again, you can see the Speedway, the distance is about 52 feet. It's not 70 feet. And then we believe that there isn't any detriment caused here because smaller setback will make these signs easier to see for the driving public and we think it'll be a safer condition. Next, please. So, the five wall signs, this requires a little bit of explanation. So, you see on our front entry, the architectural feature has a sheet sign. I believe this faces 14 Mile Road and this faces Utica Road, if I'm not mistaken. So, you have the two identification signs of sheets. And then this says "Made to Order." It's kind of an advertising promotional sign that lets people know what it is we do on this site. So, these are three of the signs. And essentially, because of where this property is located and there are two different distinct frontages and the intended use is a mixed-use building, you know, we believe that these identification signs on the, on both streets are appropriate. And also, the advertising signs, the 24/7 drive-through... advertising signs, the 24/7 drive-through, the "Made to Order" and such are appropriate too, because it allows people driving by to understand what's offered. If they don't know what a Sheets is, they can see these signs. They know what to expect at this location. Next slide, please? So you can see, this is the drive-through side. This is a 24/7 drive-through signage. And then this is the side of the building that has another Sheetz sign by the entry. So that, these are the other two signs, with the three that I showed you on the prior, the prior elevations comprise the five signs. So, you know, basically for those reasons, the two frontages, the large site, and the fact that, you know, people need to identify easily that it's a Sheets, and what it has to offer, we believe that those are justifications for the five-wall signs instead of the single-wall sign that the ordinance allows. And essentially, you have other businesses that aren't on a corner, that don't have this mixture of uses that are being offered. They don't need five signs. I mean, they essentially can comply with the ordinance requirement, which makes them different from our situation. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that. And then to go over a couple of points that were mentioned earlier, Mr. Farina asked a question about spot zoning. We don't think it's spot zoning because of the fact that this is a commercial district. It's going, it's going to be, you know, rezoned if we're successful to CG. The current central, pardon me, community business district is also a commercial district, and it's going to have a CBD on the south side and a CBD parcel on the west side. Well, what we're proposing here is a conditional zoning. If you had this type of conditional zoning, if it was allowed in the CBD, essentially, we're still locked into this use and this site plan. So you're still going to have those properties to the south and the property to the west that, you know, have to be developed under the CBD unless they do something different and get approval to do so. So what I'm not eloquently saying, I think, is that you're going to have this use locked in regardless of the zoning, and you're still going to have those two parcels on the south and the west that are, you know, business zone parcels as well. So we don't think it's spot zoning for that reason. And then also, if I'm not mistaken, I believe there was a question about the, whether there needs to be a masonry wall along the west side of the property. And it was my understanding that since that borders commercial property and not residential property, that there was not a requirement for a masonry wall. So that's why we're proposing some type of a substitute fence. But anyway, I just wanted to answer those questions in advance. And that's all I have, unless, does anyone have anything further? I think we'll step aside for now, and we will take notes and be able to answer questions and comments.
Because I think we have some questions.
Oh, okay.
Let's clarify the masonry wall. So it would be the same, it would be the same zoning district between the commercial and commercial, so it doesn't have to be a masonry wall.
There's a wood wall there now. That's what they're talking about.
No comments from the audience, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Sarah.
Yeah, I would, again, I'd have to go back through the ordinance, but it does abut to the south residential.
Okay, so it'd be the residential we're talking about. Okay, all right. Do you understand, Mr. Gaber?
Yes, and I believe there is a masonry wall against the residential.
Correct. Okay. Commissioner Farina, you have questions?
Yes. You said, when the variance for your 24/7, that it's, that it's in line with other businesses in the area? What businesses?
I think what we said is that that would give us the opportunity to be open 24/7, to compete with any other late-night businesses that are in the area that are either offering...
What other businesses are in the central business district?
Well, I'm not certain that they would be in the central business district. They would obviously be in a business district within the city. So I'm, I'm not certain. I haven't canvassed all of the, you know, the businesses to see what their hours are, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you clarify one thing for me, one of the applicants, if you can? The food service during the evening hours, is the inside also open as well as the drive-through, or is it just only the drive-through?
Yes, to clarify, all of our offerings are offered 24/7, 365.
Okay.
So anyone would be able to come inside or up to the drive-through 24/7, 365. And same with our food offering, including breakfast would be offered all hours of the day.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brockleman. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. You're suggesting five signs on the building. Are you also suggesting signage on the canopy as well?
I believe we were looking to comply with the ordinance on the canopy signage.
And Ms. Sarah, do you know what the ordinance is on canopy signs? Off the cuff, you don't have to worry about it. Just, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I can double-check, but I would be pretty sure that that would be on the structure, so it'd kind of be a wall sign as well.
Okay.
Probably need additional variance if they want to go for it with that.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Go ahead and have your seats. We'll open up the public hearing. Thank you. Reminder, with comments, we'll be limited to five minutes. Our city attorney is going to be timing. And when you approach the table, I'm going to hold off for a second. I'm going to ask you to state your name and address very clearly so the minute taker can take, you know, the notes.
Yes, ma'am.
If you have not signed in on the sheet at the, at the back of the, you know, off the chamber, please sign in so we know who is here. If by any chance, there are a group of residents representative by their homeowners association, if there is one, I would ask that that one representative speak as opposed to, you know, five or six. But that's just a request of mine. Commissioner Farina, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion? You designate how they're going to come up, so you...
I'm going to say, I would think that if you want to come up, you somehow pretend this is like a church, and you make a line and go out and around and back out, and try to make it as easy as ever. It's going to be very convoluted, I know.
Yeah, good luck with that.
We'll try to direct you. All right? Okay. And we will try to take notes. I asked my colleagues to take notes, too, so we can answer your questions after the public hearing is closed, if we can answer them. Okay?
My name is Greg Grunberg. I live at 17540 Wilhelm. My biggest concern is, right now, Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. Canada geese. You're going to put water on that property and a picnic area. Now, this may sound funny and ridiculous.
Let the gentleman speak, and no comments while someone, let's have respect for everyone who comes up to speak. Please. Go ahead, Greg.
Anyway, my concern is that the geese are going to eventually show up. And of course, their feces is as big as a dog. I worked at the GM Tech Center, and we had a lot of places to walk around, but if you did, you had to tiptoe and do the dance in order to walk on their property. And we were also notified that if we did go out and walk, we had to be careful where we walked, because if they had a nest or something, they're vicious. They will come after you. So my concern is, is they're going to build this pond, and then the geese are going to eventually show up. And then who's going to clean up after those geese? Because their droppings are toxic. I knew a family friend, she had her lawn service quit coming out to her property to cut her lawn because the geese were there. And they would not cut her lawn because they weren't going to spread that feces around and get slapped in the face with it. So she had to find a way to keep them off of her property. But anyway, that is my concern.
Thank you, sir. Next person, please. Let's try to make it as quickly as possible.
Kent Stonebreaker, 32309 Oxford Court. Lot was said about the drive-through at the bank earlier. That drive-through worked nine to five every day and nine to 12 on the weekends. A 24-hour drive-through, we don't have in the city of Frazier, to my knowledge. I don't believe Popeyes has a 24-hour, and I don't believe Rally's does in between Grossbeck and Utica Road. I know McDonald's does, but that's Clinton Township. This isn't Frazier. As well as that, if we're looking to do something for the future Frazier, for the betterment of Frazier, I hear gas station, but I don't hear anything about EVs. We have a big, serious problem with EVs coming in the future and gas trying to be not there. So I'm trying to understand...
No clapping.
I'm trying to understand where this is going to benefit us for in the future. I've been in your position. I understand what our job, what your job is to do. So I'm not for the rezoning and repurposing without having some idea of what this is going to do for the future, and I'm really not for the 24-hours gas drive-through. Got no problem from 6:00 until 10:00. Give it a break at night. I understand all that, but I'm, that's where my position is. I, you know, don't think we should afford that variance.
Thank you, sir. Next person, please. Go ahead. You can start forming a line if that's helpful, so you know who's next and whatever.
Hi, my name is Sandy Thomas. I'm from Schott's Market, 16659 East 14 Mile Road, Frazier. The issues I have with this property is that, first of all, it doesn't meet the zoning requirements. A community business district is to create more walkable community. This development, this development, I don't think will actually create that. Some other things, gas stations contaminate property. That property right now is not contaminated. Once a gas station goes on-site, it will be. We already have two gas stations across the street. There are four gas stations within a mile. After 8:00, Frazier is a quiet town. Do we really need a 24-hour anything? I don't know if this is the right site for this property. Sheets looks like an amazing company. Their drawings were beautiful. I just don't know if it should, there's, is there another three-acre site they can go on? Grossbeck would be a better property. It's more industrial. There's other brownfield sites already there. And my other concern was the EV. They didn't talk about anything of the future. The future's supposedly EV. Nothing came up about that. One of the things is, is this a public benefit or interest? Now, we've got gas already in Frazier. There's food in a lot of different places, as well as convenience store items. So I don't, in my opinion, see that it's a public benefit for the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Vince Calabrese, 17926 Breezeway, Frazier, Michigan. I don't think we need a huge gas station or another gas station in the heart of Frazier. That's the downtown, that's where the walkability's supposed to be. Communities in Oakland County, Detroit, Michigan, Wayne County, everywhere, they're trying to create walkability to their downtown districts so that people can enjoy it. We're going to have an in-road and an exit at this huge gas station and the restaurant, which is, I don't know how that's going to impact positively people walking on 14 Mile Road with their dog, their cats, their children, whatever. But I think you're trying to jam too much into, you're trying to pound, jam 10 pounds in a five-pound box. We don't need another gas station in downtown Frazier. There's an empty gas station right across the street from this building. Why don't you put one there? It's been empty for 25 years. I just think it'd be a lot more simple for everybody if they can continue living our humdrum life in our little community and be happy, and still be able to walk around with less chance of getting run over by increased traffic flow. And as far as, it's not the, it's not the business that worries me about being open 24/7. It's the people that use those businesses. I'm sure the businesses have trained their teams to follow a certain protocol, their standards and the community standard. But their customers don't. They, most customers barely have manners or say thank you or please. So the chaos at 3:30 in the morning pulling hole shots, it's going to happen. It's going to happen every night. It'll be a different time. But it's not you that will be the cause of that, but you'll bear the brunt of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I am going to ask the audience, please, no clapping. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Paul Salufo, 316400 Avenue, Frazier. What I've heard tonight, and what I've read, actually, is that the variances that they're asking for, in other words, there's a total, my count of tonight is five of them. So they don't meet our requirements for that property usage. It's not part of our master plan. It isn't something that has been lobbied for by the residents of this community. I don't think we actually need another fast-food restaurant. And more importantly, once this is developed, as Sheets suggests it's developed, and by chance, and I know this probably isn't the case right now, but they do go belly up, the repurpose of that property is going to be extremely hard. And I'm not talking just about mediation. I'm talking about the buildings that are on the site and what they've done with that particular parcel as far as what they needed to do so that they can make money. They're not here because, and I believe this anyhow, they're not here because they want to be good friends to the city of Frazier. They're looking for an opportunity to foster their business at our expense. And unfortunately, this board is actually part of a group of people that get together for a very small amount of money and come forward with their best ideas in the best interests of the residents for pennies to do this job. And I understand that this board just recently put through a master plan, and that master plan does not have anything like this in it. So I would appreciate if you would all think about that very carefully before you go ahead and give your considerations for council. And I will be talking to my council members about this, too. Thank you very much.
Hello, how's it going? Happy New Year's, by the way. My name is Matthew. My family owns the mobile gas station on 14 Utica in the corner. I want to say that we purchased the station about three and a half years ago. We actually tried implementing the 24-hour thing, but the city of Frazier dies out, like Schott's Market said, around 8:00 to 9:00. There's no more traffic. And the traffic that was coming later at night was not the traffic that you want inside of your business or in your community. I've grown to love this community. It's a very tight-knit, hospitable community. If you treat them right, they'll come and support you. And I don't feel like an outside company that's worth billions of dollars has this community's best interests in mind with a 24-hour station, when there's already two, you know? I understand that my family has a station across the street, but if you, a quick two seconds, if you pull up Google Maps and put "gas station near me," within a three-mile radius, there's over 20 gas stations. The city does not need another gas station, but it needs something, but not a gas station. I'll tell you that. Thank you again for your time.
Hello, my name is Christian Lecido, 16605 Rosemary Avenue. First, wanted to point out that one of their pictures on their slide already had a piece of garbage on it. It was a storefront. I also wanted to point out there was oil stains up there. That's a picture that they're presenting to this group today. I have a number of concerns here. I'm going to do my best to just go right off of this. I could be going on for hours about this. So first, to start it off, constant fumes from the fuel pumps. Yes, there are pumps across 14 Mile, but these pumps will be considerably closer to houses on the south of 14. My children, along with my neighbor's children, health in the surrounding areas becomes a concern to me. This intersection already has two gas stations. This is already a very busy intersection with its own problems. I can see this site from my kitchen window. Two, three times a month, I'm already telling you that I see emergency lights out there, whether it be an accident or some other situation going on out there. I believe that this will make it even more dangerous intersection. Increase in garbage, pollution, noise, increased lighting, and an increase in the possibility of land pollution with addition of a third gas station at the same intersection. The growing rat problem is also a concern to me. The other day before I drove up here, I had a dead rat in front of my house on the street. I took a picture of it, and I actually showed Bob Logan. It's disgusting, and it's not going to help that situation of ours. The added detention pond can also attract rodents, other animals such as geese, which has already been mentioned, that can defecate all over. I believe seeing an increase in mosquitoes with the installation retention pond as well. This is something you'd see off of Greshit or Grossbeck Highway. It looks like a mini gas, or a mini truck stop to me. This is a 24-operation has potential to attract a rough crowd. Nothing good happens to 2:00, 3:00 AM in the morning. I'd rather not have a location that could attract drunk strangers at all hours of the night. This is also a safety concern for me. Property values in the area would depreciate accordingly if a 24-hour fast-food gas station is allowed to operate. I'm not sure how claims of improving traffic flow can be made in already dangerously busy intersection. I don't see any EV chargers on the plans. I assume Sheets is aware of the push for EVs. Is there a plan to install these in the future, and if so, where on your plan? What is the special land use variance request? They did go through that, so I appreciate the clarity on that. They did go through that, so I appreciate the clarity on that. How much advertising is to be done to try and attract more potential customers that do not live directly in the city alone? Lastly, the rezoning is approved. Are there, are there already supplied plans going to be different than what actually is built? Another slide of theirs already had a lack of privacy trees right in front of my backyard. So that was already a difference that I noticed. If this is allowed to go through somehow, which I please hope everybody I hear sees how many residents are here and it resonates to you guys. Do not allow 24-hours operation. Please move the location of the pumps to the north side of the building. It's not going to help much, but it's away from the families. Construct a new taller wall with four-to-five-foot berms with greenage on top of them. Please, matured greenage, not something that takes five-plus-10 years to grow. Closing, the city should be looking out for the safety of their residents. Adding a 24-hour fast-food drive-through and third gas station to an already congested intersection that has enough problems as is, doesn't sound to be in best interest of the residents one bit. I feel that the section of 14 Mile Road between Utica and Garfield has potential to develop in a nice, small Frazier downtown area. And truthfully, I don't think a 24-hour fast-food gas station adds to that appeal one bit. I would consider looking at other successful downtown areas that draw in and act as a meeting ground for those residents. I look at Sinclair Shores and what they have done with the Greater Mac Area, hosting the social district once a month in the warmer months. This event has seemingly flourished.
You have one minute.
And viewed upon, thank you, viewed upon in a positive manner, bringing residents together and giving the local government and local true mom-and-pop businesses a chance to participate in. Thank you for your time.
My name is Pat Harris. Address 15863 Kingston for 46 years. When my husband and I moved to this community, we moved here because it had the flavor of a small town. Frazier's been like that for years. They have second and third-generation families living in this town. This development is not a good thing for our town. We are surrounded by suburbs that are much larger, that have much larger commercial areas, that would be more well-suited to this. Further, there's one restaurant that I know of that's open 24-hours in this city, and it's a restaurant, and it's Ram's Horn at the corner of Utica and Masonic. None of the fast food is, et cetera. The small-town flavor is going away. First of all, how many gas pumps are at that fuel station? Eight? Are they double-sided pumps? Does that mean 16? How many of those pumps are diesel? Have you ever witnessed how much noise diesel trucks and diesel motorhomes make? I know, I own a diesel motorhome. But we fuel it outside of this city. I think this is an absolutely unbelievable slap in the face at Frazier. I'm not saying Sheets is a bad company. I have never been to a Sheets. We travel extensively in the United States. Been in Ohio many, many times for softball tournaments, et cetera. I've never seen a Sheets. And I am not happy that one of them is coming to Frazier, supposedly. They're a good company. I just don't want them. They are not going to add anything to the community of Frazier. I've lived here for 46 years. I have never felt the need for a 24-hour gas station or a 24-hour restaurant. Has anybody thought about the lighting from that fuel island? We have a neighbor that has a LED light on the back of his utility building, which is right at his back lot line. It is shaded. He built, he did that about 20 years ago as an irritant to us. However, what he didn't realize was our bedroom's on the front of the house, and it lights up our backyard and gives us total security back there. So it's been a real asset for us. Randy knows all about it. I just hope that you will consider all the points of these very hard-working citizens that live in this beautiful town, and I don't want to see it lose that atmosphere. Thank you.
Jim Chandler, 31559 LOD, which is on the south side of Frazier. I have no quarrel with Sheets. They're a private company. A private company sold the land to another private company? That's America. One thing I haven't heard addressed is there will be this detention pond, and whether it has a fence or not, if somebody, God forbid, does drown, if a car does go in and somebody does perish, who would be responsible? Would it be Sheets or would it be the city of Frazier? And if it's the city of Frazier, how could we possibly afford the lawsuit that would necessarily come out of that? So that's my one question. The, the other thing, they've already addressed the geese, and believe me, I grew up wanting to be an ornithologist. I know all about geese. And that picnic area is not going to be much of a picnic area. And, and the park that they're talking about is probably no bigger than my yard. I mean, 300 or 100 by 30 feet, it's like 3,000 square feet, isn't a lot of space. And I do appreciate they want to grow. I do understand, and it's been brought up, that it is a large footprint. And God forbid, somebody already mentioned this, if they go belly up, and we've seen companies over-expand, CVS, Big Boy, Kmart, I mean, the list goes on, what happens if Sheets does go defunct? What happens to that property? Who's going to want it? I mean, you'd have to not only do all the digging up of all the, the gas lines and all the, the underground tanks and all that stuff, but it's a huge footprint. And, you know, you know, God forbid, I don't want to stand in the way of anybody, you know, trying to make their living in America, but, you know, maybe it's not in the best spot. And I don't have a problem with Sheets going anywhere else in Frazier. I've never seen an intersection with three gas stations unless it's coming off the interstate and into the exchange. I mean, it just seems ludicrous to me to, three gas stations, I mean, my God, I can't even see how Mobile and Speedway don't get into a Hatfield and McCoy thing over, over there, you know, struggles. And now we're going to have another one. It's like, I don't know. I'm not a businessperson. And, and the other thing about the lights, I mean, I, I live up close by the schoolyard where the school buses are and St. Cyril there are, used to be Queen Mary of Hope. The lights are outrageous, those LED lights. I don't understand how the people can even get up and look out their windows without being blinded. Luckily, we're on the backside of that, so that's something else to consider. And, and that's all I pretty much wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on forward.
Good evening. My name is Frank Beretta, 46499 Snowbird Drive, McComb, Michigan. My family's lived in Frazier, they're behind on Rosemary for the last, over 30 years or so, since 1974. And I'm really concerned what's going on there. That was a small town, beautiful area. My grandkids are going to be growing up there now. And I'm really concerned with the, with the gas station and the pond. The pond, it's going to be contaminated with fuel, okay? It's not like a park. It's really, literally runoff fuel and water that comes from the gas station. They're making it sound like Frazier's Rosemary Street is flooding and that's going to help their situation? I'm totally against that. As far as the geese, they're going to probably die from the contaminated water. My grandkids, I hate to see them go into that pond and something happen, okay? Or for that matter, anyone else. There's been a situation at a Kroger on 20, 19 Mile and Shana where a car went into the pond and the people died, right? If I can remember correctly. So I think it's a big mistake. Totally against it. People need to really consider this. As a small town, like a lot of people have said, it should be kept that way. It's just a truck stop, okay? Diesel vehicles and a bad crowd that it's going to bring after 10 o'clock in the morning, none but trouble, all right? And my kids and grandkids have to live behind that and deal with it night and day. So I'm totally against it.
My name is Emma Stasich, and I live at 16430 Wood Lane. I'm a newer resident to Frazier, and me and mine recently decided to commit to this community, probably for the rest of our lives. And we're really excited about that. And one of the things that I really love is, like, the rich little bit of history that this community represents. And I think it's interesting that twice over, the community burnt to the ground, and, you know, this bank building that we have is a little slice of history that sort of stands for where we come from as a community. And it'd be really great if, you know, future development kind of took that into consideration in a more meaningful way, besides just dismembering the building and incorporating portions of it into a park setting. You know, some of the questions that I have about this particular development is, how does it differentiate Frazier as a community? And kind of piggybacking off of some of the other comments that others made, you know, it's really easy to get drowned out in just like suburbia. You've got these huge cities all around us. Like, what are we going to do that makes our four-square-mile town special? And I think that, you know, being more intentional with how we manage our DDA, and, you know, I apologize, I'm not sure the extent of that organization. I'd like to be more involved. But, you know, how are we, how are we thinking about our community long-term to really make a difference, not only in people's lives, you know, as residents, but also in the surrounding areas? You know, and, and I'm, I'm questioning how this particular development aligns with our long-term goals and vision. I'm curious, the true benefit that it brings to the community? And I'm wondering if it will take away from existing businesses? And, you know, ideally, I, you know, I think that there's a lot of opportunity to receive grants on a state and federal basis that would give us the ability to more carefully consider, you know, how we're going to enrich the community as well as support long-term goals that take into consideration economic innovation, wellness, and diversity as well as sustainability. And when I say diversity and sustainability, I really want to focus more on diverse revenue streams as well as sustainable revenue streams. I think that those are things that we can accomplish in our special little four-square miles. And thank you very much for the time.
I'll ask you your name one more time.
Emma Stasich.
Thank you, Emma.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Mezzan. I am a resident at 16532 Rosemary Avenue. I don't think this gas station has a place in Frazier. We are trying to develop the town into more walkable, trying to attract more residents, and I don't think that's going to do that. I can't think of any city, Sinclair Shores, downtown Rochester Hills, that are filled with gas stations to bring residents there. We are adding a retention pond. I only see this attracting pests. Geese have been mentioned. Mosquitoes. Mosquitoes love sitting water, and that's exactly what it's going to be. As a resident of Rosemary, I'm also kind of sad to hear that we were to be contacted to talk about possible development plans, but I don't know if we're on the cutoff. I, I actually see my house in that rendering, and I've never received a letter, and here we are at the hearing. I don't think this has any place in Frazier, just even hearing what they said. There's already two gas stations there, and we're trying to develop and grow the city, and I don't see that's attracting any more people to our town.
Thank you.
Do you live on the side of the street that puts up to the gas station?
Uh, I don't, but I can actually...
Side of the street?
Yeah, I live across the street, but I can see actually the Speedway through the trees right now.
No notice you received?
No, no notice.
Not, not from the city either, just...
I received a notice from the city. I do have that letter, but...
You didn't get a letter from the applicant?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Anybody else? Come on forward, thank you.
Lisa Acker, 16595 Rosemary. Thank you for provide, for providing me the opportunity to speak on the proposed changes to our neighborhood and community. I have been a resident of Frazier for over 20 years. This small but mighty town won our hearts. We bought our first home here, which we're still in, and we started our family in it. I'm dismayed at the possibility that changing our community will become drastically worse. Health and environmental safety issues for my family and neighbors are top of my list, with my property value decreasing at a very close second. We have chosen to remain in Frazier because we love our little city and feel safe here. I cannot imagine living anywhere else. And the possibility of rezoning has allowed the thoughts of moving for health and safety reasons a mere reality now. I feel this proposal came out of nowhere. I understand the planning commission met its obligation of notice within 15 days, and we respect that, but it happened over the holidays. I feel it's rushed, and I feel with the McKenna Conditional Rezoning Review summary only becoming available to us recently, has more questions than answers. I am more disappointed to think that no one has taken into consideration that there will be a neighborhood of children living and playing near a gas station. Under Section G of the Special Standards for Land Use, more specifically, the proposed use is so designated, located, planned, and to be operated that the public health, safety, and welfare will be protected. The McKenna report simply rewrites what the applicant states what they will do rather than weigh in on the benefit for the public. Let's cheat public and residences the same. Nowhere does it mention the negative effects of gas station, fumes, and underground storage tanks on surrounding neighborhoods. There's not a single instance on this report that discusses underground storage tanks and its impact on the city. What's the EPA stance on this? What guarantee can the applicant, the landowner, and the city provide for our families? We have two young daughters, and I will do anything to protect them. How many of you are parents and want the same for your families? You might not live on Rosemary, but you would do what you could for your families. By volunteering on this commission, you also take an oath to do what's best for the citizens of Frazier, and those two girls of mine are included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, you choked me up. I moved here from Roseville because my son goes to Frazier. I chose Frazier over Roseville. I lived in gas station alley, okay? There's plenty of gas stations along Grossbeck off where I lived. I've worked at gas stations, numerous ones, truck stops, too. I know the litter. I know the misbehavior. Are they going to sell alcohol? Because I guarantee you, that back lot there will be covered in glass. Who's cleaning that up? And not to mention, the back lot where it's covered in glass is probably because somebody's back there drinking. I know they talk about having cameras. I see all kinds of hiding spots where I can go hide and do illicit things. How busy does Frazier police want to be, rolling through at 3 o'clock in the morning again because a neighbor called and heard something going on back there? Yes, they talk about the off-site security, but how many people are working overnight? Three? Maybe? They're not outside patrolling? And that off-site security, they're going to get on a PA system and say, "Please leave"? This person doing heroin? Who, like, I feel bad for the people along Rosemary. What are they going to find in their backyards? And the pests? And the rodents? And the, and the, how many tanks will go in there? I grew up in Richmond. They have a piece of property for sale from a gas station they cannot sell because the cost to remediate that land is price-exorbitant. Nobody wants that. There's already two other places. How, do we want that entire section to be polluted in 30, 40 years? I'd like my son to inherit my house and not have to worry about his taxes going up for an EPA removal site. We already have enough issues. I'm not against gas stations. I think we've got plenty. I'm not against Sheets either. I think this part of, or Frazier is beautiful. I like the historical aspect. That's not walkable. Where am I walking? Across the parking lot? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
[applause][1784.33]
Name is Mark, last name Nadolski. Name is Mark, last name Nadolski. Uh, I live at 32680 Newman. And, um, so it was kind of interesting because I work with a lot of commercial businesses and I work with, uh, a lot of chain stores. And, uh, so when I saw sheets show up, I, I said, wow, that sounds familiar, you know, because I've went and worked in the areas that they have the majority of their stores. And I looked at the, I came into the city office and looked at the rendition, you know, uh, which is just a rendition. It's not a final, a plan, uh, which, uh, could be changed. I think, I think they'll approve it and then it's changed afterwards so the people would not, uh, like say, approve or know the final changes on it. I'm not too sure. That's just a question. So I, I sat and I said, wow, this is interesting. So I live in a two-story house because I'm the, the back lot of the subdivision by, uh, Rosemary and, uh, and, um, and so I can see pretty much that intersection from my upper story. So there is, uh, an upper story that oversees that area. And I said, you know, I said myself, wow, you know, uh, first of all, I see two gas stations and I go a third gas station. That's interesting. I don't see that too often in a small town, let alone in, in a, in a large area. Sometimes we do. And, uh, and then I, I said 24 hours and I said, wow, that's interesting because like everybody's mentioned, you get a crowd, people are young and they do different stuff. They're in a different, you know, way of life at that point. And of course it will bring the crowd in there. I mean, I've stayed a lot of hotels and, and, near the hotels are, are, uh, gas stations. And so, you know, you go and you, you go somewhere to buy pop or something, you go there and you see the crowd that's there. And/or I'm sitting in a hotel and there's fast food joints. And so all kinds of people are doing all kinds of stuff, including throwing their litter all, all over the place, you know? Some people might, might, you know, go on that property and do something that's, uh, not proper, or they may go down my street, which is the next street to that, that corner, you know? Rosemary, the street there. And then, you know, I sat there and I said, wow, um, okay, so, so I'm there and I built a, a nice house there, you know? And, and I'm looking, and one thing that really that we've learned is, is that, um, I lived in a different area in Frazier and then I moved to Newman after that. So I continued to stay in, in, uh, in Frazier, but, uh, we had our kids were younger and we walked all those streets. And I will tell you that we've been able to see a lot of people, not a lot of people, almost everybody keep up their property. I, I was amazed. Some of these people are out there every day cleaning the property up. And the streets that I would be on are the streets nearest to the, uh, to the gas station, you know? And, and, and I just said, wow, you know, who's going to be picking up that litter? Now, I have a couple of buildings in Detroit and there's a party store that's, uh, I would say within a hundred feet of my property. And I've picked all, I would say thousands of bottles, uh, and I've picked up, uh, condoms and I picked up, uh, needles and I, you name it. I've picked up stuff-
You have one minute.
After years. So one thing that, that I've learned is that I went and Googled Earth, uh, the sheets, uh, because I knew they were in different areas, okay? So when I Googled it, there's no condition, no area that has the circumstances we have. So when I looked at it, I Googled 27 stores, I made a map of them all, and in Ohio and one in Indiana. And when I looked it up, I, there's commercial property, there's industrial properties, there's expressways, uh, but there's no, there's no small town. I don't see them in a small town location. In addition to that, I only saw out of those 25, six stores, one area where there was a residential backed up to the border, the back of the gas station, it was on the very corner. It was a rural area that had a huge lot at that point. And, and, and so it was-
That's time.
It was it. So, so I, I, again, I, I don't, this is an experiment because it hasn't, I have not seen it.
Thank you, sir. All right, thanks. We have more people coming forward? That's okay. There's probably more than one, so.
Hello, Planning Commission. Mike Parrott, 15942 Kingston. I echo everything else that these people have said. That's, that's the last place that I can see a gas station going in, in Frazier. Nothing against sheets. I mean, they're, they're in business like a lot of us, um, but that is, that's the last place. Um, I originally came here to really talk about, more about hoping that there was a way to, to get a reprieve, whether it was with, whether it was a sheet proposal or something else for that, that bank, because no one's really talking about how great that bank is. Um, my, one of my best friends is, is Brian Stephens, who you know, Stephens, if you read the history of Frazier, he was the president of that bank, his relative, owned the Stephens lumberyard, owned a lot of things in Frazier, the Chevy dealership. Um, I told him about it today. He lives in McComb Township, you know, he's a descendant. And he was like, you guys could not get a buyer for that beautiful bank. I mean, he couldn't believe it. And he was telling me, you know, that's got, you know, three different kinds of marble in that bank. He said, that, that has to be some type of restaurant or, and I told him the library was interested. And he said, so couldn't the library work something out where it could be a, you know, unique library slash retail type of, you know, environment? So I think the only thing I want to leave here, because I, I can only echo whatever everybody else said, that's not the spot for a big gas station. You got two across the street, right? And there's residential there. It's, it's just not the spot. But I think, you know, you have a hard, hard job. I think you can come out as heroes if that space does get utilized the right way. Um, hopefully it's not taking that bank down. I mean, I will help. You have my name. I will help, you know, form an action committee to try to find different venues. I mean, I have some sources to, to look into different things. I, I just found out about this a couple of days ago, that, that that was going to be a gas station area. And it blew my mind. I couldn't sleep last night. So it's important to people here in Frazier. And you, you guys know that. You, you know, have more history here than I probably do. My wife is, you know, grew up here. I've been here 25 years. Kids went to high school here, so, um, or all, all, um, years of school. So, um, anyway. Yeah. So it's, it's really, it's, it's really important and you, and you know it all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for your comments.
My name's Colette Nicholson, 16250 Gordon. Didn't really plan on talking, but I just have all this on my mind. Um, I'm on Gordon, which he was saying he lives at the end of Newman, is that little street that cuts off of Rosemary. And right now, when I'm coming out of my subdivision, my street, I can barely get across Utica Road without, with all the traffic coming from 14 Mile all the way down to Masonic. If we have this gas station, there's going to be so much more traffic that's going to back up on Utica. And talk about line of sight, you can barely, you know, when the traffic, the clears out of the traffic lights right now, you have to sit there for a good five minutes. I can just see people coming in and out of that gas station, going towards Grossback. I will never be able to get on my sub or more of the accidents that are going to happen. And like they said, you won't be able to walk across the street or, you know, the increased traffic at that intersection is going to, and then like the times where school comes out, Utica is at a standstill. That Utica Road is never going to move. And then the other thing he had mentioned, um, this, I don't know what type of food they're going to be serving, but prime food or what have you. I mean, we're a working class neighborhood. I don't know what kind of clientele he thinks he's going to get that, that we can really afford this, um, you know, prime food 24/7, you know? It would have been nice if they told us what kind of, you know, can be, convenient food they were going to serve. And then with the retention pond, I can just see what happens or detention, what if it overflows? We're already having problems on Gordon, myself, and with the construction of this detention pond and the construction of the gas station and, and all the building and concrete tearing up, how is that going to affect those old cracks and infrastructure that they've already, something happened when they redid Fruhoff to our neighborhoods that our water backs up through our sewers now and the streets? When they go try and tear up all this construction, how is that going to affect all the new sewer system that is currently there? That is not going to destroy it because they said somewhere down the line, the heavy equipment damaged a lot of the sewer piping on these side streets because they had to bring big equipment in. So I can't see, and if a detention pond was a solution to flooding, why hasn't the city looked into something like that prior to this? That would have resolved some of this flooding issue. And then I can also see people coming from Fruhoff down Rosemary to get to the drive-thru off of Utica to, you know, go to this gas station so that they don't have to come off of 14 Mile. And that itself is going to be terrible for the residents of Rosemary that, and then we have people flying down our street Gordon, which there's only, there's no outlet. I can just see traffic coming up and down through Rosemary even increase even worse. And like they said, with these young children here, I think it's going to be a nightmare. And I really don't see, I mean, are we residents going to get lower tax rates for the benefit of this new revenue coming in? Is our water rate's going to go down? I just don't think it's a good idea.
Don't count on that, Colette.
Right. I'm just saying, so like I said, I don't see the benefit of Frazier having this new, I'm, I'm the corner that we, like you said, the hometown, we don't need big lights on a corner of our hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, Colette.
Hi, my name is Yusuf Francis. Um, I work at the mobile on 14 in Utica and, um, based off what they mentioned about the traffic and lights and, um, all the cars piling up, I've actually had to call, uh, the police a bunch of times, um, during, during late night times on some customers because they got a, you know, got out of line, decided to do stuff they, they weren't supposed to do. I honestly just don't see any pros with this project. Um, there's, there's more cons than pros, right? What is this doing for Frazier? You know? It's this behemoth, you know, building, that's the gas station that's going to be there that doesn't help no one besides gas, food? I mean, there's a bunch of that around, right? Clearly there's two gas stations in the corner. I just think that area could be used for a much better, um, purpose. I'm not a resident in Frazier, but I've spent a lot of time in Frazier. I've hosted, uh, multiple tournaments at Total Soccer, so I'm very familiar with the area. Um, and I just think that is, you know, sheets looks great, you know, sounds great. Um, not trying to hammer them or anything. It just doesn't make sense in a small town like this. Um, I, yeah, I, not a good idea at all, you know, for like its residents at least. There's no pros, you know, it's mostly cons, you know? And as the applicant had mentioned, you know, previous meetings he, he's watched, he never seen as much people show up, you know? Clearly, you know, you got a crowd outside, you know, that showed up. So speak, volume speaks, right? Um, and not to mention the drive-through too. The drive-through, a lot of people are going to be beeping those horns behind those houses. Somebody's going to be taking too long, you know, someone's going to get mad and beep. And Joe's going to wake up from his sleep, you know, when he has work in the morning. So I just, I, I just think it's not a good idea, um, and it shouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. My name is Miranda Watson. I live at 17141 East 14 Mile Road. Um, I have some major concerns with, um, traffic flow. My kids go to school across the street and I drive that stretch of road two to three times a day and I cannot tell you how many times I see people run that red light. I am extremely concerned about the amount of accidents that are going to happen at the intersection. Um, also to children walking to school, just the increase of traffic in there. Um, I have been to sheets in other states and I know the kind of food that they serve. It is delicious. Um, their stores are clean, um, but why do we need to have a 24-hour dry through when they're only getting 11 cars at their peak hours? Um, my other concern is when I go to sheets in Pennsylvania, they serve, or they don't serve, I'm sorry, they do not serve, they sell alcohol. Are you going to be selling alcohol 24 hours, 365? I'm not quite sure what the laws in Michigan are, if there is any about selling alcohol between a certain hours, but that's a concern of mine. What's to stop someone from going into sheets at 3:00 AM, buying alcohol, and then going in the back and getting drunk? To me, it's just, it doesn't seem worth it, even though I enjoy sheets whenever we go to Pennsylvania. I mean, that's usually one of our first stops. But I just don't think that this is a good location. Um, I think it would be better on Greshit or on Grossback, um, where there's a larger, um, street to hold the flow of traffic. I mean, that's a bit, it's just a very busy intersection and I'm, I just have a lot of, a lot of concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda.
Hello, my name is Fadia Kam. I'm the owner of the car wash on 32660 Utica Road. I was sitting in the seat a couple of months ago trying to get my site plan approved. My car wash was open 24 hours, 365. There was a reason why I decided to close it and redevelop a mini plaza. After hours, after eight o'clock, after nine o'clock, I never gained any business. It was no benefit to my business. The only traffic that I got was people hanging out in the bays, drinking, smoking, doing all type of things. They were just trashing the place, leaving. I would come the next day in the morning, I would have to clean it up. We are already affected by the traffic on Utica Road. I could speak on behalf of the surrounding businesses on Utica Road that get affected from the traffic going north and south. With this big project taking place at the corner of 14 Mile and Utica, I feel like it's going to generate more traffic. I don't think it's just going to take from the traffic that's there. A lot of people would want to come and try it out, so that's going to add to all the traffic that we already have. I'm already losing business from people deciding not to turn and wash their car in my car wash because they don't want to hold up the line, they don't want to cause a scene, so they would just drive to the next car wash. I could say the same thing for the other businesses in the area, the liquor stores. Everybody gets affected from that traffic. We don't want to add extra traffic on Utica Road. It's a great concept, it's something that Michigan never had seen, but I feel like a small town and a small intersection does not need a big gas station like that. Grossback would be a perfect fit for them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Greg Acker, 16595 Rosemary. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here this evening. Been a Frazier resident for more than 20 years. My wife and I moved here specifically for the small town feel and the city's reputation for being a safe place to live and raise a family. I'm here this evening to share my concerns regarding the sheets location being proposed at the corner of Utica and 14 Mile. My property directly butts up against this site. This project will be an obnoxious intrusion on our quiet neighborhood. It will draw thousands of people from neighboring areas and it will do so at all hours of the day and night. This will make our homes and neighborhoods less safe. It will drive down property values. It will expose our children to harmful fumes and toxins that are known to cause childhood cancers. It will lead to increased crime in our small community. It will lead to environmental issues and increased pests. And no matter what steps are taken to insulate us, we will hear, smell, and see this store Regards to the security, I would like to point out, just four days ago, an off-duty police officer was tragically killed at a sheets location in North Carolina. He did this while trying to stop three criminals from stealing $83 worth of beer. I realize these things happen at 24-hour convenience stores. They can happen anywhere. But why would we bring a store to downtown Frazier that brings with it any of these risks? with it any of these risks, let alone place it directly next to a residential neighborhood? Sheets' security could not prevent this tragedy. Sheets is asking the city to make numerous exceptions to the zoning codes in order to accommodate this project. The same very codes which were put in place to protect the lives and property of the residents who currently live here. They aren't asking for a small exception. They're asking for exceptions to be made to allow the property to be rezoned from central business to commercial general for a 24-hour operation, a fast-food restaurant, a gas station, a drive-thru, multiple freestanding signs, and they'd like all this to happen directly adjacent to a residential neighborhood. I remind you, these zoning rules exist to protect us. Frazier Plan and Committee meetings are begun by reading a statement which governs the direction of the committee. It states the spirit of the code must be observed, public safety must be secured, and substantial justice must be done. Nothing about this project will keep us safe. In fact, the only possible impact this project could have would be detrimental to our safety. This most assuredly does not feel like justice. I recently read Mayor Leese's statement regarding an empty building not serving the city well, but please don't be so desperate to put something in that location that you're willing to put just anything in that location. Regarding other statements made by city council members, I realize residents of Rosemary chose to move in next to a commercial property, but it was in his zone for business commercial, not general commercial. I expected that if the bank ever closed, the city would be sensible enough to replace the bank with a similar nine-to-five business, something like a medical office. I never could have expected the city would consider rezoning the lot to allow for a 24-hour fast-food, gas station, and convenience store. I never would have bought this property otherwise. If this project goes through, you'll leave us no choice but to move. Sheets, the members of this committee, and members of the city council will chase us from our home of more than 20 years where we've raised our family-
One minute.
...and shared wonderful memories. And if we cannot sell our house for its full value because of this project, then our home will become yet another rental property in Frazier. I can allow, cannot allow my children to grow up adjacent to a building that will poison them. In conclusion, I hope the city comes to realize what a terrible mistake this project would be and denies this and all appeals from Sheets. I ask that if you're not prepared to reject the appeal outright, you at least postpone the decision for 90 days so we can research the health impact of the project and explore legal options to prevent the project altogether. Thank you.
Sir, just for my benefit, can you repeat your name for me, please?
Craig Acker.
Craig, thank you. Anybody else who wants to speak, please? Anybody from the outside? Anybody want to speak? Public hearing?
I do.
Come on up.
I live at 16330 Gordon. I started kindergarten in the 60s at Emerson Elementary. I'm older than I think. I've seen a lot of stuff in this city, but this is the first time I've ever come to 20's planning meetings because nothing ever this atrocious has ever happened in this city before. This is a bad idea for the city, for the residents, and for Sheets. This is not the proper location for this. If it was, we wouldn't have to do all this zoning changing. You're trying to shoehorn this in there. I've been to Sheets. I like Sheets. When I go to Pennsylvania, it's cool, okay? It'd be great to have one in Frazier, but not in this location. That building is special, and besides that, it's the wrong spot for it. It doesn't work. It doesn't fit. Grossback could be a great place for it. Sheets says on their website, they want construction workers, they want road warriors, and they want soccer moms. You're going to find all those on Grossback, a lot more of them than you will on 14 and Utica. I didn't check the numbers, but I'm pretty sure there's a lot more vehicle traffic on Grossback than there is on 14 and Utica combined. They need to find a new real estate agent. This is not the right location. I went using Google Lens, the miracle tool, and I took an image of the bank and I said, "Find me another building like this," because I couldn't think of one. And you know what? Google couldn't come up with one. There's no other building like that in the world, not that I can tell. But look at Hopkinsville, Kentucky. In Hopkinsville, Kentucky, they had a white elephant bank similar to this. I didn't check all the information because I was short on time, but what Hopkinsville did was they took it, they renovated that building, and they turned it into apartments and a bunch of other stuff. And this was decades ago, and it's successful. I believe it was 2007 they did that. Maybe the city should be looking into that. Maybe we should revisit the library, possibly taking over that building. Sheets is from Altoona, Pennsylvania, cold country, not exactly environmentally friendly place. I, I don't, how come they're not having provisions to put in EV chargers? That doesn't make sense. Do we even have the capacity to hook up EV chargers, superchargers there? I don't even know. Are they going to add in later? Are they thinking that copper is going to take a dump in price? It's going to be cheaper 10 years without putting copper in for, for their chargers? I don't know. This, none of this makes sense to me, none of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you already, you already spoke, though? One time, that's it. Okay, sorry.
Hello, my name is Peter McVadden. I'm a 10-year resident. We moved here for the schools. I had a daughter graduate, 81, one in school right now. She's in the band, she's in color guard, she's living a great life with school. That's where we moved. We are right from Emerson, right down the street from them, and every morning, all the moms, all the dads, and all the buses pack the streets. I'm one of the people that put up the little markers on the grass so they don't park on my stuff because there's so many parents that are coming to this city with their children and they don't need a truck stop. What do you see up there? That's a truck stop. I go all the way up to Newbury and back, and I go past the first couple exits and stop in there, and how do I know it's there? The big beam of light. I'm unadmirable. I just came here, looked up into the nice, dark, beautiful city we live in, and that would be gone. There would be no Frazier charm, there would be no, it would be a truck stop. Sheets is great. God bless America. I'm the only one on my block that flies a flag. I'm also a radical and all that stuff, according to other people, but that's another story. But it's a truck stop that our city and my children, who are still in school, don't need to deal with. It's amazing when the, this city is so big, the traffic is so intense, it takes the EMS to get, you're going to hear whee, and it takes them five minutes just to get through the traffic in the city now. It's obscene what to do. That's not Frazier charm. It's not a nice city. It's not welcomed by me. My vote is no on a truck stop in Frazier. God bless America.
Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Hi, my, I'm going to catch my breath a minute. I just rushed down here with the audio problem. I was up in Richmond watching somebody FaceTime the meeting. Anyway, I'm Deanna Reiner, 15569 Luxembourg. Excuse me. Literally out of breath trying because I knew the comments were almost over. Just real quick, my concern too is that location and how it was picked. I purposely, with even the two gas stations, I usually have to make a right turn to get in, right turn to get out, so I plan ahead when I get gas. It's hard on busy times of the day to make a left-hand turn out of the gas stations already. And I guess part of my concern is on how that location was chosen. And again, this may have already been brought up, but I couldn't listen because the audio was gone. But my concern is, what about the small businesses that have been here? The two gas stations that are there, Speedway's been there for years, well-established, Mobil, which would probably be the other gas station that will face the most competition. And again, that's been here forever. I shouldn't say forever, but Foster started it. They've been here, so why would a big company with all the studies they do could more than likely possibly put two other small businesses out of business to bring their business in? So that's my big concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? Anybody in the hallway? Anybody in the audience? Are we all, are we clear in, no one? Okay, anybody else in the audience? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. I will try to address some of the comments or questions, and I ask my colleagues here to help me a little bit. Go ahead. No, we're going to, we're going to address them now as best as we can. Okay.
Will you let me start?
You want to start? Go ahead, Mr. Farina, Commissioner Farina.
I think the first thing that people asked was geese, the problem with pollution of the detention pond, how will that be mitigated?
Can we please be quiet? Okay, thank you. So in regards to the geese issue, more than likely, this detention pond will be what's referred to as a dry pond. In other words, when it rains, the pond will fill up with water, but it will be so designed as to drain empty within 24 to 48 hours after the storm is over with. So you will not have standing water in that pond all the time. During dry periods in August and those months, it'll probably just look like a big grassy bowl. I don't really anticipate you'll see a lot of geese. Mosquitoes can be mitigated by the addition of simple pellets to the water, but again, if the, if the water is draining out within 48 hours, it's not going to grow a lot of mosquitoes. In regards to the pollution for the, from the parking lot going into the pond, there are draconian regulations in place that govern what actions have to be taken when a fuel spill happens in a modern gas station. So the amount of gasoline entering that pond is going to be minimal, if any. And David could actually probably talk more about the spill response that are required for the operation of a store like Sheets and what they do to, to prevent pollution from entering the, the storm system.
Thank you, Becky. A couple of things I'd like to start off with. First of all, as a first action response, our employees are trained to use an onsite spill kit. So say if somebody comes out there and accidentally spills five or 10 gallons of gas, we have an onsite spill kit that is ready to go and be deployed and train personnel to use that. So that's going to first off help protect the stormwater system. Second off, we use quite a few measures to try to protect our own storm system because it is costly to clean things like that up, and we do clean them up. We'll use things like Enviro snouts, which essentially traps a lot of that petroleum in the stormwater system prior to getting to the pond. In addition, you know, if necessary and required by the engineering, we can install an oil-water separator, which would separate off all the water that would come off of the canopy and catch any potential spills. And so that's a large underground containment system with a trench drain. So there's a lot of things we can do to protect the water, and we have in the past. So that's something we would absolutely be willing to entertain. Does that answer your question on the pond?
Answer your question.
I'm trying to pose other people's questions.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Another question was, do you sell alcohol?
We do sell alcohol per local ordinances, so, you know, we would be under the same restrictions as the other fuel stations in the area, so we would be starting up and shutting down alcohol sales at the same time.
Packaged liquor also?
Packaged liquor, I don't believe we've made a decision on that yet from a merchandising perspective.
Okay.
It would not, I mean, it's not impossible that we would sell that.
I have a question for you, mine. Has the purchase of the property been completed?
I believe-
Is it finalized?
We have not purchased this property. We are going to lease it. So we would be leasing it from the property owner. So Sheets wouldn't be purchasing this. We would sign a long-term land lease and build, own, operate, maintain the building and the infrastructure.
And who's going to own the property, then?
That would be, I mean, the, the property owner that's been-
The original property.
-put on the deed.
Original, the bank?
No, no, it would be another property owner that's purchased the property.
Okay.
Another real estate investor.
You mentioned you've done projections on the business, and have you done projections on the effects to the area, including the other businesses in the area?
We have not done anything in effect to the other businesses in the area. We have done everything from a traffic study all the way to our own analysis to make sure that the site would meet, you know, kind of our requirements for how much traffic and the type of, you know, movements necessary and things like that from the site.
Periodic, I guess from my point of view, you've opened these around, you've got like 400, 500?
700, 700-plus, yes.
Typically, what happens to the local businesses in the area?
I, I don't know if I can speak to that accurately. I would say what I, what I can tell you is that when we do come into a market, sometimes good things happen, you know, a little bit of competition can, you know, can help improve things in the area. So if there's a site that does need investment, even if it's two miles down the street, sometimes, you know, we see more investments in businesses in the area, either one, because we maintain our site in such a nice way, they want to match that, or two, you know, they want to stay competitive. So I, I can't speak to any kind of specifics or some kind of statistic on that.
A lot of questions have been about traffic, and getting into your site is not a smooth, smooth transition into that site. The way your driveways are, how would you get a big diesel rig in there? Where are your diesel pumps going to be, anyway?
So I, I'd like to make a quick point of clarification. We do not cater to large trucks. And what I mean by that is, we don't expect or want large semi-truckers to be coming through and stopping in our site. We are able to, as a matter of our engineering, able to get our fuel truck and delivery truck on the site. So a few things, like I said, we don't cater to these large trucks. We don't have anywhere for them to park. They certainly do not really fit on this site. We do not have high-flow diesel. We do not have any kind of showers, nothing to that effect that would attract over-the-road truck drivers. But just to be clear, we can circulate the site with our delivery trucks.
Can you answer one question in between Commissioner Farina, if you don't mind, we're talking about the tanks? One public speaker mentioned there's eight tanks. Does that mean there's twice, are they double tanks? Are there 16? Are there eight or 16 ways to get gasoline?
There would be 16 spaces to park to get, but eight, eight dispensers, they're two-sided.
Correct. Okay, thank you, sir. Not at the, not at the moment, sir. Go ahead.
Gasoline is forever. It's diesel.
I am going to ask you not to speak, sir, okay? This is, right now, the public hearing is closed. You had your opportunity- You had your opportunity. Thank you.
Now, somebody mentioned the availability of EV, and it's not shown on your plan, and I checked, and it's not on your plan.
That, that is correct. It is not shown on the plan at this time. Here's what I'd like to address about EV. A lot of the technology is proprietary, so Sheets doesn't own it. If we could, we would absolutely be installing it on almost all of our sites. But at the moment, we have to approach Tesla, EV America, the list goes on, for their technology in order to get that installed, and they don't always want to come to all of our sites. So that's not something I can guarantee that we're going to install. Here's what I will say. Sheets is actively engaging in research and development to develop our own EV in-house system. What that's going to look like yet, I don't have all the information, and part of that is because all the proprietary technology hasn't been released for us to use. So when EV becomes available for us to develop it, we will aggressively be adding that into our sites. We do pre-plan some things like ADA spaces, conduit, and things like that on the site through the final engineering, in order to make that easier to accommodate.
Do you want me to continue?
Yeah, go ahead, continue.
Okay. Somebody mentioned the, that doesn't promote walkability, because that is essentially a, it's only on the fringes that's walkable? I mean, how do you address that?
Well, if you look at the site, there is, there are two concrete walkways that enter the site, one from 14 Mile, one from Utica Road, and go up as close to the building as they can within the protected green space. And the rendering doesn't show both of them. You can see on the west side that there's a striped walkway crossing the asphalt portion over to the building. There would be one on the east side as well. It's just not showing in this picture. So insofar as is practical, we have made this pedestrian-friendly.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Klein.
In addition to that, we do like to provide bike racks on our sites.
Thank you. You made my day.
We do like to do that, and I think as part of this project, we would be improving the sidewalks on our frontage. Is that correct or no?
Uh, in the areas where they need it. Um, there are sidewalks there are actually in pretty good shape right now.
Okay.
How did you determine that a third gas station would be a viable option in the area?
I know that our real estate people spend a lot of time looking at a lot of metrics, everything from safety to the number of vehicles per day, to how many people are in the surrounding area, other businesses in the area, and I can tell you that they feel confident that we would be able to sustain our business on this corner. Past that, I don't have data on hand to discuss that at this time.
And that, that radius that you have coming in a 14-mile road there is ample for a fire truck to make a turn?
Yes, it is. We, we've run models to make sure that emergency vehicles, the garbage truck, and the delivery vehicles can all get into and out of this site safely.
And what is that turning radius?
Usually, for a fire truck, I'd, I'd have to look at what the Fraser standards are, but most of them require a 40-foot clear turning radius.
Okay. So the questions that I- Oh, I can say, I just have a few. I don't, do you have any comments from the public that you want to address?
No.
To answer? Commissioner Kyle? No? Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Just, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
Fire trucks run on diesel.
Sir, I'm going to ask you again. If you interrupt again, I'm going to ask you to exit the building.
The gas station, we're agreeing to a gas-
Sir, I don't want to go back and forth. Thank you.
Don't vote for the gasoline station.
All right. So I, sir, I'm speaking now. If you cannot keep quiet, please exit the building. I understand you're emotional about this. I understand your comments. You had the opportunity to speak just as well as everybody else. Public hearing is closed. All right, I have a few questions, and just to, hopefully just to address what some of the public comments were, just that the public understands that this rendering and the site plan that was shown tonight is not what's being approved. It is the rezoning that's going forward to City Council, and Planning Commission is making a recommendation only. You know, we are not the ones who, we have to consider any application that comes into the city. Somebody made the comment that, you know, why are you bringing this stuff? All right, I'm-
It wasn't, I asked a question.
I'm not answering questions right now. Please, respect the board. Everything's closed for public comment. I've lost my train of thought here. We are not, you know, first of all, we're not trying ourselves to bring development in. When an application is received, they go through the, the review process, and they come in front of us to make a yes or no decision. This conditional rezoning is a recommendation only to City Council. City Council has the final say on this conditional rezoning. If City Council grants this conditional rezoning, that site plan will come back here, and that's when we will address all of the site plan issues that we casually see at the moment. But it will go through departmental review for any concerns, as well as fire, engineering, DPW, so we can address that when the site plan, if the site plan comes back here. All your comments were recorded tonight. They will be incorporated in the minutes. The video will be online, the, you know, the meeting video will be online. I encourage our city council members to view the video, to read our minutes, to be well-prepared for their consideration of rezoning. I encourage the public to attend the city council meeting also. In our zoning ordinance, the city council may hold a public hearing. They're not required to hold a public hearing. I don't know what city council will determine whether it'll be a public hearing or not. I am hoping, even if it's not a public hearing, that the chair will open up the floor for public comments. Let's see what else I have.
Madam Chair, might I ask a question regarding-
No, sir. No, sir. If you want to come approach me at the end of the meeting, I'd be more than happy-
Because I'd like to amend my input.
Your, okay. You, you can't now, because the public hearing's closed. If you want to come back after the meeting, I will address any concerns and questions that I can assist you with. Okay? Thank you, sir. Um, I don't want to say this. Maybe our city attorney can answer this question. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Ms. Toma, but what is the determining factor for city council to hold or not hold a public hearing?
Uh, my understanding is city council will hold a public hearing on the, the conditional-
That's your understanding at this point?
Yes.
So it will be renoticed to the 300-foot radius?
Yes, that is my understanding.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see. I understand everybody, you know, a lot of people are emotional about the, you know, state, you know, the bank building. I understand their comments on safety and litter. I'm not sure how the sales of alcohol works in our city. Do you know? Usually, it goes through the police department. They have so many permits to issue.
That I don't know off the top of my head. I, I believe, I mean, you would need state permits, as well as, I believe, local permits as well.
Okay, yes. Right, okay. So we have no control over that. Okay. Uh, let's see, what else do I have? We, I wouldn't, some of the comments were terrific about the economic development and director, DDA. We do not have that here in Fraser. We do not have a DDA to promote business. We don't have an economic director to promote business. I encourage any of you residents to reach out to this department or the administration if you know of anyone who might want to use this site. I appreciate the applicants coming in. It's a beautiful site. It's gorgeous, and I think that's the conflicting concern here. It's, it's very aesthetically pleasing.
If there are no other, other questions or concerns, I'd like to just talk about a few of the points that-
Okay.
-were being made tonight.
Go ahead.
A couple of things, especially from the environmental perspective. Sheets has almost an unlimited resource to correct environmental issues. We do that voluntarily when we buy sites. There are sites that aren't required to be cleaned up, they're below certain thresholds. We do it anyway. We spend a substantial amount of money monitoring and maintaining our UST systems and fuel dispensing systems. And I have spoken directly to our environmental director at Sheets, and we have an unlimited budget to repair and correct UST systems if they leak. So if we find a system that we can't fix, we will rip it out and fix it. And that's honestly what we're supposed to do per Eagle standards. We will meet those standards, and I can confirm that we've done that in a few locations. We've had an issue. It was unable to be resolved without replacing the tank. We replaced the tank and fixed the contamination. So we really are a company that does put a lot of money where our mouth is about fixing environmental contamination. We've only had a few situations where we have had, you know, environmental contamination leak from our sites that, that's from us, and we've corrected all those items. So it just kind of speaks to a broader, you know, we're trying to be good stewards of the environment, especially in the communities that we're in. We understand that there's people there, and, you know, we don't want to have impacts to groundwater and soil either. So, and that just speaks to a little bit of that, and in addition, our fuel system runs under vacuum. So when you dispense fuel, there is not a lot of vapors getting out, if, in fact, if any, even from the pump, because modern, modern vehicles have a vapor recovery system built into their gas tank. So I understand concerns about, you know, maybe fumes coming out. It's really uncommon at a well-maintained gas station to smell any kind of fumes. In addition, our delivery trucks have built-in vapor recovery systems. So when our truck is there dumping fuel, they recover the vapor that comes out of the tanks. So we're taking all those steps to make sure that we're protecting the community. There's a lot of questions about the traffic congestion. We have done a traffic study, and it, and like we said earlier, there are minimal changes that need to be made to some signal timing. You know, we had that study done by a professional engineer, and I don't know if that's been reviewed by the city at this point, but it will be reviewed and approved by the city to make sure that we're not causing any major, you know, detrimental traffic situations out there on the road. From a lighting perspective, we will meet all lighting codes, and I believe your, your standards is a half-foot candle at the lot line. We will meet that. In addition, the buffering is going to, that's not even taken into account, the landscaping buffering. So I think we've done everything we can to try to minimize any kind of lighting impacts, including, you know, we don't have any floodlights or anything like that, and all of our lights are downlights, so we're not trying to throw lighting onto any other property, especially residential. In regards to safety and security, late-night activities, you know, I think it was said earlier, we can't control everything that happens at night. What I will say is that our security and our cameras deter a lot of those activities. We have letters from Pennsylvania of state troopers that say, hey, at night especially, people avoid sheet sites because they know our cameras are so good, they can still get caught at night. So we do everything we possibly can. We can't control every customer that comes in our doors, but we do everything we possibly can to, to mitigate any kind of safety concern from the community. In addition, I think one other thing we wanted to note is that the Speedway to the northwest of the site, we believe is a 24-hour operation. We just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Lastly, I, I think a couple of things. There is an interest, like, we understand that this site is going to be redeveloped one way or the other, and that's just something that our landlord has, has, I believe, communicated to us. And that's one of the things I want to point out, is, you know, we're trying to exceed your codes and give as much landscaping as we can, a lot of green space, a lot of good amenities to the community, to just be a good partner, and try to just be there for the community and provide a nice amenity.
Thank you, Mr. Brokaw Meyer.
Thanks.
Appreciate that. Commissioner Kyle?
One of the big concerns I heard from, from the citizens of Fraser tonight was the 24-hour deal. Is every one of your stores 24 hours?
Every single store is 24.
So if, if, let's say this went through, but one of the stipulations was no 24 hours.
We, we would not build the site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Meyer?
Would the same thing pertain to drive-throughs? Or, or having, like, several people said, having the drive-throughs for a short, shorter period of time, let's say up till 10 o'clock or something, so it wouldn't be over, overnight? Would that be a possibility?
I do not know if we've done that. I would like to speak more broadly on the drive-through. We, we do have data from our, we have a data analytics team. It's pretty awesome. They can analyze all kinds of sale data, data from our cameras, all kinds of things like that. And they did a study on our platform with drive-throughs. Our peak is 11 cars per hour at lunch. Off-hours, it's two to three cars an hour. We really aren't running a huge amount of volume, and there's a couple of reasons for that. We have made, the made-to-order food, we intend people to come in, grab their food, use the restroom, you know, maybe grab a cup of coffee, and then walk away. It's a little bit more of an attraction to come inside of the building to eat. There's a nice place to sit down, relax, maybe even jump on the Wi-Fi. We have free Wi-Fi in every store. So it's a little bit more of an attraction to come inside the store. The drive-through's really for convenience, and really what we're getting at with a drive-through is, say you've got four kids in the back of your minivan, do you really want to bring them all into the store at 6:00 PM after a soccer game? Not really. And what we see is a lot of families like that come to the drive-through because they can mobile order on their app, they can order on the touchscreen, they don't have to yell at anybody in the car or over the speaker, and they just drive up and get their food that way. So it's really not an attraction. We're not trying to shove high volumes like Chick-fil-A or Starbucks or anything like that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? I think we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for coming this evening. Uh, who do I have? Ms. Yer?
Yeah, I just would like to put it on the record that, so after this meeting, their, Sheets attorney and our, the city attorney will be drafting a conditional rezoning agreement for a city council review. So until that's done, we don't know when the city council meeting will be held, but it'll be noticed, it'll be in the paper, and according to public hearing requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Yer. So it could be a couple of months.
I guess it depends on, on how long they take to-
[laughing] It's a long process to do the rezoning agreement. I, I know that, so. All right, if there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
Well-
Commissioner Whining?
I, we're just asking questions of that. Now I just want to make comments.
Okay, go ahead.
To give direction, I think.
Okay.
This whole process, I found out a week ago when we got our packets about this. No idea, I knew the same, you, some of you out in the audience probably knew before me, because you got the 15-day notices, probably. So it's a lot to take in, in a short period of time, especially after we worked for multiple years, this board, on a master plan for the downtown district, the community business district. And we worked on a plan, went through everything we could, back and forth, back and forth. This is what we want in this city. This wasn't part of that plan. The process here, asking for conditional zoning, is asking for a number of variances that would have normally had to go through our ZBA, and they would have had a chance to dig in more and more. Conditional zoning's completely different. So these five items, drive-through, 24-hour, et cetera, doesn't address it like a zoning board would exactly, with hardships and practical difficulties and why to give. This whole site, I've been in this city, I've lived here 46 years, I've been in the school district 65 years. I'm a Fraser person. My brothers worked at Foster's gas station, which is where the Mobil is now, and that was in the 60s and the 70s. Things were different with signage. Here, we're asking for setbacks with signage and everything. was in the 60s and the 70s. Things were different with signage. Here we're asking for setbacks with signage and everything, just because they got it. Well, times change. We don't just give stuff away because somebody else had it. The times changed, and now with this district and with the zoning, our zoning ordinance, there's reasons for why we put what we put. So those setbacks, it's a reason. It's not just because they got it across. They got it across because they got it a long time ago. We can't make them get rid of that. That stands for the test of time while they're there. When we get a new opportunity, that somebody's coming there to maybe start a new business or to change something, that's our opportunity to get maybe some of these setbacks further away. There's a lot of stuff that could have been done with this site differently, maybe the layout to get these, I'm glad they're monument signs, because that's our direction, but still blocking vision, there could have been things looked at, like the canopy, and pricing up there. There's a lot of different things, and this is such a short time. I can't recommend something like this on this short notice, especially when we have other sites. Grossbeck, everybody talks about and keeps bringing up Grossbeck. Grossbeck is a perfect place for this business. We'd love this business in our town. It's the site. It's the site that bothers me. When Ms. Stasich, was it, about the DDA? I was administration here at that time. We tried twice with the DDA, and there just wasn't, it was great, we were going, we were going, and then it died. What we need is a DDA for things like this. This should have gone through a DDA, and they got involved first. It's a long process, and it shouldn't be jumped at overnight like this, in a quick way. And it's not overnight, believe me, in the whole process and the scheme of things, but it seems like it, especially when people out here just, really, it was Christmas and you're, you're not even thinking about something like this, and all of a sudden, your backyard has this big, different whole site completely. And of course, you were used to the State Bank of Frazier, so everybody gets complacent with what's there, and yeah, there's going to be change. That's the way it is. I'm sorry, that's America. And things are going to change, they're not always going to be for the better, and each of our own's opinion, but this, we worked on so hard for this site, or for this downtown district, to make it the walkability, all, a lot of different factors came in. It's not just here, I just can't pick one thing or another. It was a combination of a ton of things. And what we cared about, and knowing, being here my whole life, is you know the town. I worked here, I retired from this, this city here, and it's, you meet the people, you love the people, you, things, it's a different world as far as I'm concerned. I work in other areas now, which are nothing like this Frazier. Of course, four square miles is small, but you get to know everybody, especially if you went to school here. This isn't something I can, I can back, and I'll just say right now, I would not recommend this to council. That's just my personal opinion.
Please, stop with the clapping, please. Any other comments? Not necessarily questions, but comments? None? Commissioner Farina.
Yeah, I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Barr.
I think the object is great, but not here. Not at this site. That's the whole problem. Not that it isn't a good thing, all that, but this is the wrong site for it.
Commissioner Farina.
When we, we look at a special land use, there are eight standards that we have to consider. And I, we've skirted some of those, and they have skirted what, on their side, to their advantage on some of those, but one in particular that I'm looking at, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at the proposed location. In no way I can find that that's, that's true. Because if, if it is food, there's a restaurant within a half a block, if it is gas, there's two gas stations. So I, I'm going to have a hard time with that one. There are also several others in here. And the public safety and the welfare will be protected with the increased traffic. I don't know that that's to be true, so I would have a problem with that. Rose use shall not cause substantial injury or the value properties, and that includes the businesses, the other businesses in the area, and I don't know that that's, that's the case here at all. We have to look at what happens if there's vastly successful, and I truly hope, wherever you build this, it will be. Do these two gas stations go out of business, and we're stuck with radiating two parcels that can be nothing but gas stations because they've got tanks in them? So, those are my thoughts on it, so.
Okay, I will give you my thoughts. It's not in line with our master land use plan. We worked very hard, this whole board worked diligently on our master plan, and it was adopted by city council. I hope city council respects our opinion on the, on the master plan, as well as our opinion this evening. It's not a fit for that location. Love the building itself, the aesthetics and all the landscaping and the bike racks and all that good stuff, but it's not a good fit, and it's, it's just not a, personally, I don't think it's a good mixed-use development. Those are my thoughts, very simple.
So, how do you want to handle this? Do you want a roll call, yes or no?
We're going to, well, first we have to put a resolution on the, on the, on the floor.
I'll make a resolution.
Go ahead, Commissioner Meyer.
I make a resolution that this does not go before city council for approval for the five variances. I don't know if I'm saying it correctly, saying it correctly, but I suggest that we do not send this to council for our approval of the five variances. Have I said that?
Yes, to go to council.
Well, I'm suggesting that we say no, that we.
Recommendation.
Our recommendation is no for the five variances. Have I said that correctly? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
I'm going to let the city attorney speak.
Well, that's what I, I'm asking her directly.
So I would recommend, if that's, your intent is to recommend a denial, is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Recommend the denial.
I would, my recommendation would be wording along the lines of making a motion to recommend denial to city council for the foregoing reasons. I think most of you have articulated, without putting them inside the motion, those reasons, I do think it would be prudent to incorporate those into a formal motion, but to begin that phrase would be something along the lines of, I, you know, move to recommend denial of the conditional rezoning to city council.
Okay, I'll second your motion.
Commissioner Meyer needs to put the reasons into her motion. As best as you can, and we'll, you know, assist if you're missing any that we think we're missing.
Okay. I would like to recommend to city council that we will deny the five variances. Number one, because of the fact that.
What? Oh. No comments, please.
Why don't you just say the special, deny the special land use? And that, that takes care of the variances, you don't.
Okay.
Or refer to the square on your last page of your report, might be helpful to you.
You're okay.
And be patient. We're okay.
None of us have been doing this before.
I request, I request that the city council accepts our denial because of the fact that the, we're concerned with the sustainability of the existing businesses surrounding the site. We are concerned with the pond and the safety with that pond, with the picnic area. We are concerned with the fact that the monument signs, accepting that they want monument signs just because there are monument signs on the adjacent property, the amount of signage that they want on the building, as well as the potential signs on the canopies as well, and the fact that it will have a negative impact on the residential areas surrounding the site.
Master plan.
And it also goes against the master plan. I'm sorry. I'm trying, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My only recommendation would be, at the beginning, you had stated to recommend denial of the five variances, to change that language to the conditional rezoning is the technical term.
Oh, okay.
Or the proposal. But that's my only recommendation.
Do I have to say that all over again?
You can just state on the record that you'd like to amend your motion.
Okay, I would like to amend my motion. Thank you.
Okay, is there support for the motion?
A second.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Meyer and support by Commissioner Farina to recommend to city council denial of the rezoning application in front of us this evening for five reasons. Did you get the reasons, Ms. Greenia?
I did, and the really good thing was I got, but she made that motion at 10:41, and I can only amend that. I will do that, I have done that many times before.
Okay. That's wonderful, it's good to hear. And any discussion on the motion on the floor?
No.
None, Ms. Greenia, roll call, please. Commissioner Barr.
I agree that this should be not sent.
The recommendation is for denial. So do you say yes or no?
Yes, for denial, yes.
Chair Zarnicky. Yes. Commissioner Farina.
Yes.
Commissioner Kyle.
Yes.
Commissioner Meyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Warnock.
Yes.
I encourage you all to go to city council and, you know, publicly speak if they, if it is a public hearing, so. Okay? Thank you for your patience. Thank you all for coming. The meeting's not over if you want to stay.
It'd be over.
We take a five-minute break.
I'm going to take a five-minute break. That's okay.
What, do you say it quick?
Just some of us want to make them. On board, can I ask everybody to exit?
Can you go outside, please?
And then...
Unless you want to stay for the meeting. Then push that door shut after you go out, please. Oh, no, you can stay for the meeting.
No, no, you can stay, it's just we need to...
You can't talk.
Just don't talk. Yeah, this guy talks again, we'll have to kick him out.
I just wanted to say thank you for...
Okay. We appreciate that, sir.
...my mind.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good night. Stay if you like, okay.
I'm watching at home.
Well, you're more than welcome to stay and watch, sir, we just need to continue the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night, sir. All right. Did we cover 6B then? That's done because of the motion.
We're done.
Right, okay. All right, we are going to new business, 6C, election of officers.
I'm chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to recommend you for another term as chairman since you just had such a fine job tonight.
I will second that motion.
Whatever, gentlemen.
Are they at thirds?
Are there any other nominations on the floor? If not, then do we do a roll call? Is that what we do?
If you accept the nomination and there are no other nominations, then you don't need to vote.
It's done, and I forget Mr. Andrews' terminology for that. There's a word for that.
Declaration?
Oh, now it's gonna bother me. I know.
We don't need that word, let's get her done.
I think, yeah.
Okay, we're done.
All right, I'm chair for another, one more year and that's it, everyone.
I would like to make a nomination to make Randy vice-chair for a second term.
Second.
Oh, my gosh. Any other people?
Any other nominations, are you taking over chair?
No, Randy.
No, I'm teasing you.
I want to get it done.
Does that mean I get to take this chair?
Any other nominations on the floor?
Do I have to sit there, though?
No, you're vice-chairing now.
Gentlemen, are there any nominations for vice-chair? So, Randy Warnock is vice-chair by...
If I accept it.
That word, acclamation, I don't know what, is it acclamation, something similar. I'm gonna ask Clark. Please do.
I'm chairman. I'd like to nominate Renee for secretary.
Is there support for that nomination?
I'll support that.
Are there any other nominations?
You have to ask her if she accepts.
Oh, do you, well, let's, do you accept that?
I will accept, yeah.
But are there any other nominations for secretary? You are secretary officially. Okay. That's all taken care of, that was quicker than our public hearing. All right, so now we are going to item number seven, unfinished business, sign ordinance discussion, and that is Ms. Seer.
All right, now for the part everyone's been waiting for, the sign ordinance.
This is the exciting stuff, right, Juan? Okay.
It's a shorter one, but we can add it to the next one.
Can we just add it to the next one and stop it, just look how late it is?
It is very short, though.
It is much shorter than the other ones.
What do you wish, you just wait till, just adjourn it till next time?
Is that all, is this one page?
It's like two pages.
Right after Lauren crapped.
It doesn't matter to me.
Next time, I'm getting a lot of, okay, all those in favor for postponing the item to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I didn't, I didn't have a support yet, I was just getting a raise of hands is what I, it's not a motion, I don't think. Do we don't need the motion to postpone it, do we? It's not an action item.
No, it's just discussion.
I, yeah, okay. And anybody who would like to discuss it tonight? All right, so let's just go with the preference of the board and we will postpone the sign ordinance until February. Right? You're okay with that, Ms. Seer, that gives you more time to slip that home occupation into the...
Sounds good, sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now we are gonna go to item number eight, public communication on non-agenda items. I don't think there are any.
Any public?
Okay, any comments from the public on non-agenda items?
I'll be in for your sign. We'll talk about that.
Okay, all right, okay. Agenda item nine, monthly report, December 2023.
Make a motion to accept the monthly report as submitted.
You do, I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, though?
And I don't think we ever did a motion before, but we just discussed it.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, I'm gonna ask a question on that.
Do we have to accept it?
And hopefully it won't be too lengthy of an answer.
I'm gonna ask.
You want, that's your question, you go ahead and ask it, Mr. Farina, you go ahead.
No, this is for the city attorney and city government and the planner. Have all the, has the big boy site plan been closed? Have all of the items been met?
They have not. The city administration decided to extend the deadline to January 17th for them, for them to complete the conditions of the temporary occupancy agreement. My understanding is there are still some items that have been reviewed by engineering that need a little bit of tweaking. But I do know that the city administration, the city manager, they extended the deadline until January 17th. Originally, it was January 1st with the holidays, it was extended to the 17th.
Okay.
So, we have no say in that?
Do...
Do you want me to make a motion to say I told you so?
That motion is not accepted. Thank you. I get to do that, because I get to chair for another year, so...
There you go.
Do we have any idea how close they are to satisfying?
I think they're getting, they're getting there, is my understanding. I know Mr. Andrews was in communication with, I'm gonna butcher his last name, Mr. Vigron, today, they spoke about it today. And they have, few of the agreements are good to go, I think there's maybe one or two that still, they required some revisions on it. And then, as well as, there is one parking easement agreement that I know was discussed at the last meeting that the applicant was at, that we've also explained to them that they need to provide to our office. They've provided one that is in good form, we've indicated they can use, you know, essentially a very similar agreement as well with the Lions Club parcel, we just have not received it yet.
So, it's just the format, not what's inside the agreement?
That is correct, yeah. So, it's just, you know, we're almost there, I feel like I say that every time, but that's my understanding from, I had a lengthy discussion with Mr. Andrews about this topic today.
Thank you, Ms. Tomich. All right. Any comments from the public on that? Okay. Agenda item number 10, zoning board of appeals member liaison report, Commissioner Farina.
Thank you. At our last meeting, we had a tribute for the outgoing chairman of the ZBA who had done it for the last, well, since its inception, actually. And we had a state representative come in and a declaration from the, from the state was read and approved and given to him. It was a very nice tribute to Mark and Stimek, and that was about the extent of our, our business because the gentleman who wanted a sign ordinance did not show up and we reset the, we had to re-note the public hearing. So, that will be handled at the January 18th meeting of the ZBA. So, that was all the business that was done at that meeting. Any questions?
I have none. Anybody? Anybody from the audience have questions? Okay. Agenda item 11, commissioners' comments and items of interest and concerns.
I have one comment. We got our packages last Thursday, we usually get them a week before, which is good. But I would like to get notice, you know, I found out about this thing tonight that we went over that was very, I think, very, very important, that the city knew about it before we did, actually found out about it laying in a hospital bed themselves. So, how did the public notices go out?
Ms. Greenia, can you answer that?
Generally, what happens is Lauren will ask the assessing department for labels for all property owners within 300 feet, and then she gets the notices ready and sends them out, and it's also good...
And she's also good to get the notice to the newspaper, so basically what she does is she, the first time I see the notice, is she will get the affidavit, pretty much of publication, and send me what the notice looks like.
Can we, when public notices go out, can we get them too? So, we would know that something this big has come through.
You would like, you would like us to add...
You know, this is like a one-time thing that's happened this whole...
Do you, are you requesting them to come deliver to your house or just email?
Just to email. I mean, if something like this is going on, because like I said, I found out about this, I was notified about this last Thursday, when we were already getting slammed on the internet for over a week, you know, we were getting stabbed, and I had no idea what anybody was talking about.
I think it might have been the circumstances with the holiday, too.
Right, this is a one-time deal, but I just hate to see it happen again, because this, it got pretty violent on the internet. You know, we were accused of taking bribes and blah, 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 and, you know, I had made a note that, you know, we didn't even know about it, and I was called a...
Don't smile at that, Kevin.
I don't know what I was called.
Don't smile at that.
He knows what I'm talking about. But just if something like this is coming up, if the public is being notified, I think we should be notified, too.
Maybe by email we should be notified when a notice goes out.
Sure, we can do that.
By email or...
We can do it.
Would this ever happen again? You know, maybe not.
No, but I mean, if we just get in the habit, I think, you know, when Lauren sends me the notice, then I just attach it to your group of emails and go...
Yeah, regular...
I don't need to explain anything, you'll just know it's what's coming and...
Yeah, that might be helpful. And if we have questions on it, you know, just email if we have questions, we'll call.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do, probably.
Anything else?
I'm just excited to be here.
Commissioner Warnock.
No, not tonight. I think when things went good, I think we should have our alumni talk, too, as commissioner comments.
Alumni?
Our alumni.
Oh, oh, okay. Who's in the audience, but we will open it. We did open them up, okay. Commissioner Barr? I have nothing to say at this point. You're looking good tonight, it's good to have you here, Commissioner Barr. Commissioner Farina?
I'm all set.
You're all set, Commissioner Meyer?
I'm set, I'm all set.
That was your first... I've said enough tonight. Your first motion, and you chose, you know, challenging one, and you did a superb job. Thank you. Ms. Greenia?
Not a gosh darn thing, but thank you.
Ms. Tomich, do you have any comments?
I am all set.
Okay.
Nice to have you back.
And Ms. Seer?
I am also all set, thank you.
Okay, I have one comment. When we get copies of our agenda, and it refers to our colored copies, do we not have a color printer in City Hall?
That was awful that it said red, and I couldn't tell where red is.
And if you'd like to just openly express to me that you would like your copies in color, I'd be more than happy to...
Especially with this one, I mean, I printed it in color at home, and we kind of commented that's...
Oh, man, you lost money this week.
I did. I certainly did, Commissioner Warnock.
Yes, you did.
It's usually not a problem, but this particular one...
But this particular one refers to the...
This one had all the notes about red and...
Red slatted dotted lines.
Yeah, and I couldn't tell what she's talking about.
Yeah, yeah. So, if we can do that.
Sure.
And if you think, if you think the packet doesn't require color, then use your discretion. Okay?
Sure.
I appreciate that. I think that's it. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak before we adjourn?
I'd say...
Come forward, come forward.
I don't think I've ever been to a meeting before, but this was probably, I don't know, this has been one of the longest ones you've ever had.
Mad for Paul.
But I just, as soon as I found out about this meeting, I just felt like...
I want you to come forward, you're gonna speak more.
I need a name.
Because we don't have it on the record, so state your name.
You gotta talk into the mic now.
Yeah, okay.
My name is Jaclyn Cole. I live on 18150 Sylvan Lane, and when I heard about this whole matter, I just felt like, I've lived in Frazier since 1975, and we're really big, we're near the Baumgartner House, but my husband and I are both very, you know, Frazier was like, it's just such a cool little city, would, you know, there's not a lot of historical buildings here, so the thought of losing another special, like a building like that, is really sad. And to think that that could all be replaced by what was proposed, kind of bothered me.
I appreciate your comments. Jaclyn, can you, how did you hear about the...
Facebook.
Facebook, okay.
Yes.
I don't do social media, so...
Yeah, because...
What would you personally think, you don't have to answer this, I know I'm catching off guard, what would you personally think if the city put out signage for potential rezonings, such as a site like this, that we put out a sign that the Department of Public Works creates for us, that says, "Proposed rezoning for information," called the administration? Would that enlighten you as to what's going on in the city?
Yeah, I think that probably would be good.
You have to be past the site and see it, and that is required, actually, I think, by the zoning enabling act.
I was asking, or is it required?
Zoning Enabling Act requires that. You have to notice at the site, whether it just be this piece of paper on a stick.
Okay, well, Commissioner Warnock, did you do that when you were...
I did.
Employed by the city?
Yeah, we always did.
We need to look into that, so, okay, thank you.
That's why I'm here, because I just care.
If you have an interest in the city, we welcome you, we have lots of vacancies.
Oh, yes, we do.
Oh, I don't know, I'm busy making music still, a lot.
You still at school?
Uh, no, is this off the record?
No.
No? Okay.
You're on YouTube right now.
I'm on YouTube right now. I worked with Pasquale Pasquariti for almost 40 years at, you know, in the Frazier Choral Music, and I don't know how many people realize he passed away in June, but I don't know, just, still making music with the Metropolitan Detroit Chorale, which practices in Frazier. in Frazier. And the city is special, and it needs something special there, and that's not it.
Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you.
I have a question, though.
Go ahead.
Can I ask the attorney and the planner to check if that's required?
Yes, please.
How we're not doing it?
And when it stopped, and why we're not doing it going forward?
Maybe when Randy left.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
That's Kenny's show.
Oh. It's been moved by Commissioner Warnock and can support by Commissioner Meyer to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
You made two motions.
I know.
What has got into you?
I don't know. I've been up since four, I'm tired.
She seconded it.
Oh, okay.